All right, good morning, everyone. This, the Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Nagshead Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. If you would, first, please join me in a moment of silence, and as we do that, think about the LA County Fire Station where a firefighter went in and killed and injured a coworker, apparently. These cases of workplace violence are growing and concerning, and so our thoughts this morning are also with our brothers and sisters in the LA County Fire Staff. And now, if you'll stand as you're able, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and if I may, I would like to add, I thank Commissioner Cahoon for the request for a closed session, and I would like to add to that a discussion of pending condemnation actions, an update from our attorney, the purchase of property located on Sea Chase Drive, and a personnel matter. And with that, a motion to adopt the agenda would be in order.
Motion.
A motion and a second?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the introduction of this year's lifeguards, and I'll call on Chief Wells and Chad Moats.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We're doing a video presentation, just like we did last year. We didn't know exactly the timeframe for the release of restrictions, so we worked with Reverend Thumann and produced another video that will introduce our new Ocean Rescue staff to you. We're pleased, once again, to be fully staffed and have a lot of bright shining faces who are willing to be out there and be beach ambassadors to our community and our visitors.
My name's Chad Moats, captain with Nagshead Ocean Rescue. This is my 21st season with Nagshead Ocean Rescue. I'm happy to introduce my staff for 21 summer season. We're looking forward to a safe summer, and thank you, Town of Nagshead, for your continued support of the organization.
My name is Tyler Birch. I am from Jamesville, North Carolina. This is my sixth year working with Nagshead Ocean Rescue, and I'm the supervisor.
Hi, my name's Coleman Flynn. I'm from Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm a supervisor here with Nagshead Ocean Rescue, and this is my fourth year working for the town.
Hey, my name's Riley Young. This is my second year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue, and I'm from Australia.
I'm Porter Nall. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia. This is my first year working the beach at Nagshead.
My name's Reed Christensen from Atlanta, Georgia, and this is my first year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Jody Chicky. I'm from Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. This is my third year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue, and I'm a supervisor.
Hey, my name is Phil Carbonell. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and this is my fourth year working for Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Nick Gentry. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my fourth year working for Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Megan Buchanan. I'm from Orlando, Florida, and this is my first year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
My name's Clem Patterson. I'm from Yorktown, Virginia. This is my first year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Christophe Doumé. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and it's going to be my third summer working for Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Austin Fallon. I'm from Centerville, Virginia. This is my fourth year at Nagshead, and I'm a supervisor.
My name is Michael Do. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this will be my second summer with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Jacob Ramey. I'm originally from Newport News, Virginia. This is my seventh year with Nagshead, and I'm a lifeguard supervisor.
Hi, my name is Danielle Kimball. I'm from Hampton, Virginia, and this is my sixth year as a lifeguard supervisor with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Peyton Savage. I'm from Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina, and this is my third year at Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hey, my name's Patrick Trask. I'm from Houston, Texas. This is my second year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Kristen Scully. I'm from Northern Virginia, and this is my second year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Miranda Fletcher. I'm from McLean, Virginia, and this is my first year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Will Garman. I'm from Nagshead, North Carolina. This is my second year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
My name is Michael Federline. I'm from Baltimore, Maryland, and this is my rookie season.
Hey, this is Drew Bergeron. I'm from Edenton, North Carolina. This is my first year doing Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
My name is Sarah Daniels. I'm from Burke, Virginia, and this is my first year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm James Gilville. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and this is going to be my third summer working for the town of Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Jess Ball. I'm from Ashburn, Virginia. This is my third year, and I'm a supervisor for Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Jacob Smith. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia, and this is my rookie year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
I'm Martin Hans, and I'm from Arhus, Denmark, and this is my first year at Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
My name is Jackson Berry. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my first year at Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Mackenzie Boos. I'm from Camden, North Carolina, and this is my rookie year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
I'm Mandy T D. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my fourth year with Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Brett Cox. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia, and this is my second year in Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hello, my name is Mateo Special. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and this is my third year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Sharbino. I go to college in Boone, North Carolina, and this is my third summer for Nagshead Ocean Rescue, and I'm a supervisor.
Hi, I'm John Kenny, Nagshead Ocean Rescue. I've been with Ocean Rescue for 31 years. I enjoy working the beaches and mentoring the young kids.
Hi, I'm Jean Tankard. This is my second year on staff, and I'm from Cave Charles, Virginia.
My name's Ethan White. I'm from Kitty Oak, North Carolina. This is my third year working on the beach with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Mike Wood from Richmond, Virginia. This is my fifth year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue, third year as a supervisor.
Hi, my name's Carrie Yun. I'm from Northern Virginia, and this is my second year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Sarah Nye. I'm originally from Hampton, Virginia. This is my sixth year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue, and I'm a lifeguard supervisor.
Hello, my name's Matthew McDonald. I'm from Chesapeake, and this is my second year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Victoria Passmore. I'm from Lorton, Virginia, and this is my first year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, this is Olivier Pouliot. I'm from Canada, Montreal, and this is my first year as Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Parker Perkins. I'm from Raleigh, North Carolina, and this is my first year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
I'm Randy Wells, Fire Chief of Nagshead. Our community is home to one of the best small beach ocean rescue teams in the southeast United States. Thanks to the support we receive from the Town of Nagshead and its Board of Commissioners, I want to encourage our beachgoers to meet our ocean rescue members. Stop by a lifeguard stand, ask about the day's conditions before hitting the water. Also, be sure everyone in your group knows what rip currents are and how to escape them before heading out to the beach. As we say here in Derrick County, love the beach, respect the ocean.
Nicely done. It's nice to see a great mix of, you know, new folks coming into the system and folks who've been with the system for a while. It's really nice to see that, and appreciate the production that y'all put together to introduce those folks to us. Nicely done. Excited, looking forward to a good, safe summer. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is recognitions, and I'll call on Andy.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased this morning to formally introduce to you our new Public Works Director, Eric Clausen. You met him briefly at your budget workshop a few weeks ago, but we always like to bring folks up to a regular meeting and do a proper introduction, so that's why we're here today. Eric started, I guess, was it a little over a month ago? Six weeks ago? He hit the ground running. As you know, he comes to us from Springfield, Missouri. He worked for the city of Springfield, Missouri, leading a group of about 120 employees as the superintendent for their street operations and public grounds division, managing a variety of streets, stormwater and building projects, as well as landscaping park projects. He also served as a city traffic engineer for a period of time in Springfield, and Eric is a professional traffic operations engineer in addition to a professional engineer. So he brings a lot of skills and credentials to us, to Nagshead. In addition to working in Springfield, he served with the Missouri Department of Transportation, also doing traffic engineering and construction inspections. As I mentioned, he's a licensed PE. Eric is originally from Omaha, Nebraska, so spent most of his life in the Midwest, attended Iowa State University. He's married to his wife Julie. They have two daughters, Taylor, who's 12, and Eva, who's nine. Julie's wife is an ultrasound technician. The girls are active in sports, and they're certainly looking forward to the ocean and maybe trying some surfing. We're trying to get Eric to do a little bit of that, too.
Excellent.
He's been great to work with. He's certainly open to ideas and offers plenty of his own. His main goal in Public Works is communication. He's brought that to the department. He's meeting regularly with the superintendents. He has an all-hands meeting. How often?
I meet with superintendents once a week, and then all hands on is once a month.
So, once a month. And I think the staff are really appreciating all the information they're getting now. They're certainly being pulled into what's going on, and I think that's been a major impact on that department. I hope Eric stays with us for a while. We're certainly happy to have him here. Whenever we do these presentations, we always try to give you a fun fact, like when David Ryan told us he played in a hair metal band. Eric once auditioned for a movie role when he was 10 in Omaha in front of Sean Penn, and I guess that's Sean Penn's hometown, right? Or is that...
No.
That's your hometown.
Yeah, that was my hometown.
So, anyway. We're happy to have you here, Eric, and we appreciate you coming to us and all the effort you've made, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Andy, for that introduction. The next item on our agenda is recognition of Police Officer J.C. Mitchell, and we'll call on Chief Webster.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to recognize the good work and hard work for the last five years for Officer J.C. Mitchell. J.C. earned his Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice at App State. He began working for Kill Devil Hills in law enforcement. He did that for a year before coming to us. He joined our department in April 2016, and he currently holds the rank of Officer First Class. He's worked as a regular patrol officer, but he's also a canine handler and works closely with his partner, Aimee. He's been in that role since 2018. J.C. has been awarded the intermediate certificate from the North Carolina Training and Standards in 2017, and is in the process of obtaining his advanced certificate. Mitchell works hard to get the job done, and is evidenced by his flexibility in covering shift shortages, and he was also recognized as Officer Year in 2019. He's joined today by his family, Ashley, his children Hunter and Hudson, and his mother-in-law or very own Dee Johnson. Thank y'all for being here. We appreciate all your hard work, J.C. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Webster, if you'll remain there, to also recognize Resource Officer David Shane Allen.
Shane. Shane began his career with us also in April of 2000, in April of 2000, oh, excuse me, May of 2011. He began his career at Derrick County, where he was with the sheriff's office. He worked there for a year and a half. He worked for about 10 years in Kill Devil Hills before coming to join the home team. He currently holds the status of Senior Police Officer. He obtained this through the department's career progression program, as did J.C., obtaining his position. Shane worked in patrol for several years and as an investigator in CID for one year. He's obtained his advanced certificate from North Carolina Training and Standards in 2007. He is currently serving in the role of School Resource Officer at Nagshead Elementary School, and he's been there since 2017. He is also designated as a Community Watch Liaison and Coordinator and Beach Patrol Officer during the summer. He excels in his role at the school and has built excellent relationships with students and staff, and we're very appreciative of those efforts. Thank you, Shane.
Those kids love him, and he loves them. You can just see it when you walk into school. Thank you very much. We have a retired employee recognition, which has been moved to our July 7th meeting, and we have a presentation of the pay classification study, which will be time-specific at 1:30 this afternoon. That brings us to public comment, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board welcomes members of the public to come and provide public comment. This is an opportunity for people to address any concerns or issues that they have to the Board of Commissioners as a whole. It is not an opportunity for dialogue. The Board rarely, if ever, responds to public comment, but it is an opportunity to discuss matters of public concern. Anybody who wishes to address the Board regarding public comments, if you would please approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the Board. Also, we have three public hearings on the schedule today, one of which relates to the budget and two relate to text amendments. If you have comments regarding those matters, you should reserve those until we have those public hearings. So with that in mind, yes, sir?
David Bragg, Nagshead, 502 Southwings Drive. I had prepared statements, as I generally do when I come here, but since last night, I found out other issues, which I clarified with Andy earlier today, that we have a $35,000 contract for push-out and rollback services on the beach road, which kind of astonishes me because I've been coming here the last several years addressing those issues within my neighborhood. We don't have push-out and push-back services in my neighborhood. I get to sit there and listen to the, and smell the stinky shrimp and crabs throughout the weekend because the tourists push out their cans early, and they stay there, and they don't get pushed back. So I'm hoping this new garbage schedule will help the situation. Since we aren't in full season yet, I don't know for sure, but I wasn't aware that we were forking out 35K for only the beach road. To me, being a citizen living here full-time, I would expect we would get preferential treatment, not the mega houses on the beach that are owned by people that don't actually live here. So I would like to address that to the Board. I'm sure I'm not going to get an answer, as I didn't many other times when I addressed issues, so I'll keep coming back and addressing them. Secondly, and this I will go with because I wrote that before I learned the other facts I learned last night, my last point is the Board passed a resolution regarding President Trump's executive order, J-1 Working Visas, which extended until March 31st, 2021. According to the resolution, the order has negatively impacted the town of Nagshead, resulting in financial business losses, fewer lifeguards, which I see we have a pretty lot of lifeguards, so I don't know what's going on with that, and fewer jobs. The resolution is to rescind the executive order that will be sent to the White House, and what I'd like to do is read a couple of comments, one from a local businessman. I'll leave out one of the words that would probably be not appropriate for current audience. "The owner said it's a sad day to have to post this. Till further notice, today will be our last Sunday open. Our current staff is amazing, but we simply do not have enough people to be open more than five days a week. For those of you that know me, I don't sugarcoat things. The state of the beach is blanking sad. There are simply not enough workers here to keep most businesses operating at full capacity. When you visit this summer, you will see help-wanted signs everywhere. Businesses close days of the week, phones off the hook, long lines at the grocery store, dirty houses, et cetera. I do not know of one form of business here that will tell you they are completely staffed. Yes, housing is scarce, but we have been advertising for jobs with housing with no response. If you know someone who is a capable worker that is just riding the unemployment check wave, tell that person to get off the sofa and go help a small business, whether on the Outer Banks or any other town in the U.S. Thank you for all your support since 2016." I'll follow that up with a, which I don't always agree with Tom to tell us, I'll say that right now, but what he did have to say, "The unemployment shortage caused by exorbitant federal unemployment benefits is a real and serious threat to North Carolina's recovery. Over the last several weeks, I've heard from countless business owners across North Carolina struggling to hire enough workers to reopen. The governor should immediately end expanded federal unemployment insurance and focus on the incentive to encourage more people to go to work. Since the Board likes to write letters to the White House, why don't we do one about unemployment? Let's ask the President to stop the extra unemployment benefits and send a letter to the Governor and request him to stop those unemployment benefits. So if we're going to get serious about getting people back to work, we don't pay them an incentive to stay home. If they could make more staying home and going to the beach, they're not going back to work." And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? I don't believe we have anyone else here for public comment, Mayor, so at this time we will conclude the public comment session.
Thank you. That brings us then to Item F, which is our consent agenda. You have those items there before you, and a motion would be in order.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to Item G, which are our various public hearings, and I will turn this back to Mr. Leidy and to Manager Garman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider the, or to receive citizen comment regarding the town manager's proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, with proposed capital improvement project requests for the same fiscal year through fiscal year '25, '26, and along with updated consolidated fee schedule. And to begin this public hearing, we will begin with the presentation by the town manager, Andy Garman.
Okay, so in the board packet, you had a memo summarizing basically what we've done since May 5th, which is when the recommended budget was presented to the Board. So I'll just summarize briefly. So as the Board is aware, last year, we had a fairly strong year. It was much better than we predicted for FY '21. This year's general fund budget, which was presented on May 5th, was just shy of $26 million and reflects a rebounding revenue stream and tax collection at levels seen prior to the pandemic. The Board, during the course of the year, held several mid-year reviews. One was in October, and then we had several CIP workshops in March. As a result of those efforts from the Board, additional revenue that was received during the course of the year over what was budgeted was used to purchase equipment and projects that were used to get the town up to speed with deferring items that we've done in the This has certainly put us in a much stronger position when preparing the recommended budget that you received on May 5th. So after the May 5th meeting, subsequent to that, there were two board workshops held, one on May 12th and one on May 19th. The Board discussed proposed municipal service district tax rates at the first meeting on May 12th and discussed reasons why we would adopt a rate now, mainly with the goal of offsetting upcoming expenses for future nourishment efforts, including planning, engineering, and survey costs, as well as paying for the town's portion of the FEMA Public Assistance Project related to Hurricane Dorian. From that meeting, the consensus of the Board was to add a quarter cent to the townwide tax for beach nourishment, and it's certainly noted by the Board that everybody needs to have skin in the game when it comes to nourishment. So that would take the townwide tax rate for nourishment from 2.25 cents per $100 of assessed value up to 2.5 cents per $100 of assessed value. So additionally, for districts 3 and 6, two of the new proposed districts, which are north of Whalebone Junction and include all properties east of 8th Street, I mean, east of 158 from 8th Street to Gulfstream, an additional half-cent tax was suggested primarily to fund future planning and engineering costs. As the Board is aware, we're looking at doing a master plan for beach nourishment, looking at a 30- to 50-year horizon. District 4, which includes all of South Nagshead, was recommended an additional 1 cent, and that was not only to pay for these planning and engineering costs, but also for covering the town's share of Hurricane Dorian, and that public assistance project, which is expected to occur in FY '22, would be in that area from Jeanette's Pier South. So beyond that, the manager's recommended budget back on May 5th included a 1-cent tax increase to address Board goals with respect to capital projects, equipment replacements, and to implement a plan for streets, waterline replacements, and drainage, and also to pay for a pay-in classification study or the recommendations from that. During those workshops, the Board acknowledged that an additional 1 cent above what was recommended would be necessary to pay for what the Board is trying to accomplish in the coming year. And I'll just sort of restate what some of the Board's goals were stated from the last workshop. So the goal number one would be to fully fund the town's equipment replacement schedule and no longer defer items needed, as has been done in prior years. Would also be to fully fund the capital improvement plan, which includes maintenance of key assets, including streets, stormwater, waterlines, beach accesses, vehicles and equipment, and funding planning expenses to implement a Public Works master plan. And finally, fully funding the recommendations of pay-in class study in order to lead the market in the region for paying its employees. So that essentially summarizes what was recommended and what the Board had done in the last month with the workshops. And the Board has scheduled a workshop and a meeting on June 16th. We're going to be working on preparing the budget ordinance according to those guidelines that the Board has established, and also any guidance from this meeting. Just to summarize the tax, so the current town tax rate is 26.5 cents. The townwide rate with the 2 cents plus the quarter cents for beach nourishment would go to 28.75 cents. So if you're in MSD 3 and 6 with the additional half cents, that would take the rate to 29.25 cents, and then MSD 4, which would be the additional 1 cent, would take the rate to 29.75 cents. And that summary does not include the current districts 1 and 2, which already pay a 14.3 cent tax to pay off debt from the prior project. So that's what I have for you today, and stand ready to hear any guidance from the Board.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Garman?
I have a statement, which is that I appreciate the past manager and the current acting manager trying to present a budget to us that realistically gets us to where I think we need to be, and appreciate the hard work of all the staff to bring us up to where I think we've been lacking in the past few years. I thank everybody.
I would, as I was listening to Andy, it was really striking to hear enumerated the priorities of the Board and to know that that is what this budget is doing and catching up on those critical things. I agree with you.
Mayor, just a point of clarification, the head of manager did not mention also the goals, funding the goals, funding the, fully funding a 2.6 cost of living increase.
That's correct.
That's correct. I just didn't see, it was in our memo, but I didn't hear you mention it. I just want to make sure that was included. Thank you, and thank you to the staff. And I think this is going to make leaps and bounds, get us to where we need to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Or comments?
Your members of the public too, you can comment. All right, if not any, again, I don't see anybody from the public here to comment on the proposed budget. So at this time, we will conclude the public hearing regarding the town manager's proposed budget.
Thank you. That would bring us to the next public hearing on our agenda. Well, there's no action to be taken today as a consequence of that hearing, so we will deal with the budget at our next meeting. So that would bring us to our next public hearing, which is for text amendments to update the Unified Development Ordinance as required by state statute. So Mr. Leidy and Deputy Director Wyatt.
All right, so we will begin the public hearing to consider various text amendments to the UDO, which would, which are required by North Carolina General Statute 160D and must go into effect by July 1. To present the staff's analysis of this, we do have the Deputy Planning Director Kelly Wyatt to present her analysis.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I won't go into great detail with this, as I had previously gone through it at your previous meeting, but as we had noted, essentially, the updates for North Carolina General Statutes 160D, that is just a consolidation of city and county enabling statutes that were previously found in chapters 153A and 160A. I can run through this very quickly. At our previous meeting, there were a few items brought up, and the one that we had a question mark on at your last meeting was pertaining to the definition of building, the one that's currently in our code versus the recommendations for 160D. And we did work with Attorney John Leidy on this, and we did get a reply. And I can just briefly go over that, probably more so for the public's sake, because we spelled it out in your staff report. But based upon what John Leidy had provided, is essentially, we do need to stick to the language that has been requested as part of the 160D update. It specifically says that the town may not use a definition of building, dwelling, dwelling unit, bedroom, or sleeping unit that is inconsistent with the definition of those terms in another statute or in a rule adopted by a state agency, including the State Building Code Council. So based upon that, we are recommending to keep the definition of building as it was provided for in the 160D updates. Mr. Leidy did note that there could be an argument that the tighter definitions are more in favor of free use of land, but that the argument could contrast somewhat with the third party's rights to challenge a development that met the North Carolina Building Code definition, but was unregulated by the town's UDO. We noted that ultimately, the point of the statutory reference and the adoption of 160D in general has been that communities statewide are using the same definitions to ensure consistency. So if there's any other questions related to the definition of building, I can attempt to answer them, or I may have to defer to Attorney Leidy. But as we had previously talked about, there are some consistent revisions throughout the 160D language. As we said, everything that was listed as 160A or 153A has been updated to the 160D language. We've replaced references to conditional use permits, to special use permits, and the changes that were necessary associated with replacing duplex to two-family. Several definitions have been added to one, to Appendix A in the definitions of their Unified Development Ordinance. I would note that we will be coming back to you probably as a housekeeping in the next several months to address the recommended revisions to the definition of structure as it relates to the building definition. But we want to make sure that we've captured how that change would affect other ordinances, such as the flood ordinance. So that will be coming to you probably in a couple of months. And again, just in your packet, we outlined the primary revisions in all the articles throughout the UDO. The planning board, when they heard this, they did recommend unanimously to adopt the revisions as proposed. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anybody? All right, thank you very much, Kelly. Again, no one from the public appears to be here to comment on these proposed text amendments. Does the board wish to receive any further information regarding this before you begin your deliberations? If not, we will conclude the public hearing at this time, and the board may deliberate on the proposed text amendments to harmonize the UDO with Chapter 160D.
Board, you've heard the report and the response to the essential question that we asked, which staff will work on mitigating language for our ordinance to address that change for building definition? So what is the board's wish today? Again, this must be adopted by July 1.
Motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any discussion?
I might after the vote, if that's okay.
Yes, an observation would be welcome. That would be fine. Thank you. Hearing no discussion that's desired before the vote, then, and having the motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
We adopted in the recent past that all our decision-making by the UDO will be ministerial in nature. My understanding of ministerial means that it has to be based in fact, that there's no determinations to be made. It has to be, you have to make your decisions based in fact, not in what you think. And I would just like a clarification on that, because I mentioned it at the time, that ministerial means you make decisions based on facts that are supplied, not based on an interpretive decision. And we're continuing to add things to the UDO, and I just want to make sure that what we're doing is that when we add something, that there's nothing interpretive about it. It's all based in fact.
Thank you. Director Zainer?
I think, I'm not sure if I know exactly a specific instance, but generally, anything that's administered by staff is a ministerial action. There's also ministerial actions that this board takes. Generally, anything with discretion results in a quasi-judicial action, which is only before this board or the Board of Adjustment. There is a need, when we're administering the UDO in a ministerial role, to interpret provisions if there's a lack of clarity. I don't know that there's going to be every instance, every potential eventuality is going to be addressed by the UDO. And I think there's oftentimes where interpretation of the circumstances or interpretation of the code is going to be a necessity. And we try to address that as best we can in text amendments and try to reduce that, the need for that.
That is, that is a seeking for the fact that is buried in the ambiguity of the language. You're always trying to come to the fact to
Yeah, absolutely.
Use that.
Right.
May I just read this real quick?
Yes.
Okay. Ministerial act or duty is one in which an officer, in a given state of fact, in a prescribed manner, in obedience to the mandate of legal authority without regard to or the exercise of his own judgment upon the propriety or impropriety of the act done, which means that judgment or a person's interpretation cannot play into the decision. And that's what we have adopted. And I just want to make sure that that's how we're acting. I mean, I would not want somebody to come into a town office and ask a question and be told, "Well, I think," or "My interpretation is." I mean, they need to be able to come into an office and sit down and say, "Here's the piece of paper that tells you what you can and cannot do." There is no interpretation. It's a set of facts. And if our ordinances aren't written that way, then I think we need to look into those. From an attorney's standpoint, it would be absolute wonderland, because they like everything black and white. You know, boards tend to be a little loose, because we like wiggle room, but that's not what we, that's not what we adopted. And I just want to make sure that we're trying to uphold exactly what we adopted.
Okay, understood.
Understood. I think, again, we administer the ordinances best we can, and I can't tell you that everything is going to be a black and white answer. I think sometimes there are some nuances that do require us to make determinations as close to the facts as possible.
And I'm saying, what I think, at least what I adopted, doesn't allow that to happen.
Mr. Leidy?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I don't think I disagree with Michael that there will be times when you may come across a term that does require some kind of interpretation. And I don't think the, that 160D is designed to eliminate the ability to have to interpret a term, so long as the interpretation is consistent with the ordinance and the facts at hand. It is ministerial. The purpose behind 160D was twofold. One is to, is to come up with a consistent set of definitions and standards for many development issues that can be used statewide, number one. And number two was to try to put into one place the development standards for both counties and municipalities. There is a desire to increase consistency, but that doesn't absolutely eliminate the ability to have deviations on a local level based on locally adopted standards for many things, to the extent the legislature still allows that in some contexts. But beyond that, I think that there, I think it's too early to tell whether there's going to be any instance where an application being reviewed by the, by staff for compliance with the standards in the UDO will not require some degree of interpretation. I mean, it's almost impossible to come up with something other than math, where there's no room for some interpretation. I mean, I think that just remains to be seen. And I think the other thing is, you know, there is a process in here by which administrative decisions can still be appealed to another authority, whether it's the Board of Adjustments, I'm sorry, the, yeah, Board of Adjustments, or to the board itself. And that would be unnecessary if there was no potential deviation from one decision-maker to the next. So I think that all takes that into account. And then the final thing that I will point out, I believe that the desire for lack of interpretation is designed, is incorporated in some of the standards relating to waivers and which has a very specific standard now. It used to be a lot more, well, that changed a few years ago, but the standard for waivers of various types of zoning regulations has been designed to make it very clear whether somebody qualifies or not without the application of a wide range of discretion. There's still some discretion, I think, that's going to be required in some quasi-judicial determinations, you know, because evidence is presented, and if someone has to make a finding of fact as to what that evidence means as against the standard, and I think there are times when reasonable minds can differ on how those standards might apply. That's always been the case with any kind of quasi-judicial proceeding. So in light of that, I think that there may still be some instances where you find that somebody has interpreted something that may, that may seem different than the way you would interpret it yourself, but if you can see two different ways of interpreting a standard, I think that's, that's not inconsistent with spirit behind 160D.
Thanks. I just wanted to have the discussion, make sure it's on the record.
Very good.
And I'm, I'm happy.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. We did vote on that, did we not?
Yes.
You did.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a text amendment pertaining to lock coverage associated with dumpster conversions from side-load to front-load. I ask Mr. Zainer and Attorney Leidy to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we will begin the public hearing to consider this third text amendment, actually, this additional text amendment pertaining to lock coverage with regard to dumpster conversions from side-load to front-load machinery. And again, on this one, we will receive, we'll start with the staff's analysis presented by the Planning and Development Director, Michael Zener.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Good morning. Do want to bring your attention, there was a typo that I believe Commissioner Brinkley identified in the last sentence of the adoption ordinance. It says, "Public Works Director of his/her designee." It should be "or his/her designee." And I believe the town clerk has provided or has revised or corrected versions available. So as the board knows, Public Works is working to work with property owners, commercial, multifamily property owners, to convert over dumpsters from side-load to front-load. And we talked about this a few months back with the board. Basically, we've encountered a few instances where lock coverage complicates that conversion. And so we wanted to work on a provision that would exempt that additional, or any additional lock coverage that may be needed to convert those dumpsters over from the lock coverage calculation and to make it an easier process. So what we've come up with here is an additional exclusion from lock coverage. This would fall into a list of exclusions from lock coverage. And basically, and we worked to tweak this language a little bit from what was presented to the planning board and talked to the planning board about that intent at their last meeting. We wanted to make sure that this was not so focused on the town's requirement, because it's not necessarily a requirement, but it's a process of orientation or conversion of the orientation of the dumpsters. So for pre-existing uses, when the service orientation of a dumpster is being converted or when a dumpster is required to be obtained, and that usually would be when someone's using rollout carts or when they're required to obtain a larger dumpster. And again, this would be consistent with the applicable requirements of the town code. Any additional lock coverage in excess of the maximum allowable lock coverage and necessary to meet the town's requirements can be exempt, and this would be the town's requirements as required by, determined by the Public Works Director. This wouldn't exempt lock coverage that is under the maximum. This would exempt only lock coverage that may be exceeding the maximum allowed for a property. So this would only be applicable in those circumstances where someone is near or close or at their maximum lock coverage, and perhaps they need some additional allowance to accommodate the conversion. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Clausen may have, you may have questions for him about the process to convert over dumpster orientation.
All right, any questions for Mr. Zener? None? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want Mr. Clausen to make any presentation? Or just to see if there's any questions that he could answer? Does, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Clausen?
The board, I don't see none.
All right, thank you very much. All right, again,
If not, all right. Thank you very much. All right. Again, we have the opportunity for public comment on these, on this text amendment. And I see no one here from the public to comment. Does the Board wish to receive any other information regarding this before you begin your deliberations? If not, we will conclude the public hearing at this time and the Board may deliberate on this proposed text amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Leidy, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. I'll ask the, the Board. I know this has been a little bit of a hot topic, leading, leading up to today. So I would ask if, at least with regard to the question of lot coverage, does this address the issue that we're seeing?
I have a question.
Okay.
It could just occur. Does this exemption exist to if someone wants to buy a recycling dumpster? Or does it only apply to current garbage dumpsters?
Good question.
Yeah, I, I, we were only focused on the orientation of, of trash collection dumpsters. If the Board wishes it to be applicable to both recycling and solid waste dumpsters, we can, we can insert some language to that effect, I'm sure.
I would, I would.
Do we want to, don't we want to encourage recycling?
Yes, we've said so.
Dumpster purchases?
Yeah, yeah. That would seem to be, to be a fairly easy change.
I, I, yeah, I think it would be. I guess the question is, is, is... Yeah, I'm trying to think where we would insert that because it's, um... The first part of the sentence is certainly referring to the, the service orientation of dumpsters. And I don't expect that that's as much of an issue with recycling. Um... Go ahead.
Am I underthinking this to say that a dumpster's a dumpster?
Could be.
Well, that's, that's fine, as long as everybody understands that.
And then you have to add the word additional dumpsters. I guess, because we're just talking about relocating. If we're talking about pre-existing, that might be an issue.
Yeah, right. Well, but then it does say, or where a dumpster is required to be obtained. I, I think you do need to add some clarity there with respect to, because I don't expect recycling dumpsters are required to be obtained.
No, but I was thinking about the South Naxxet on the private streets where they've had all those recycling carts. If they were to decide to go to a recycling dumpster, which would change because the carts aren't considered lot covered, but a recycling dumpster would be considered lot covered.
I think what you could say is after, after consistent with applicable requirements of the town code, because that's only related to the, where a dumpster is required to be obtained, or where a recycling dumpster is being cited, comma, any additional lot coverage in excess of the maximum. I think that's where you could add that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, it does seem like there needs to be, uh... Eight, six, six, seven, six is what we have. It seems like there does need to be an eight, six, six, seven, seven that would address the desire to add a recycling dumpster and would basically then mirror the rest of the language. But, but I, I agree with the Commissioner that the idea of encouraging the addition of recycling dumpsters, that we would not, we would not want to find ourselves in the position of restricting that placement on the same basis that we've run, had run into this problem before.
And I, I would say, I understand the concept of trying to provide for more recycling. I don't think we should fall in the trap of trying to encourage more lot coverage. I mean, in, in excess of what we have, or at less, or at least, we want to change our lot coverage requirements.
So to Mr. Garmin's point, if you wanted to just recognize that dumpster is inclusive, you could say, or when a dumpster is obtained, and ignore the, the required part. I mean, that technically would allow someone to exempt the lot coverage in addition, over the maximum with any dumpster.
Yes, because what occurs to me is to think, what if you had a situation where somebody currently had a recycling dumpster and a trash dumpster, and they're required to get another trash dumpster? And so they add space for that, and they're exempted on the additional lot coverage to add that dumpster. But they could have also removed the recycling dumpster, which is not required, and put the trash dumpster in that location. So in effect, you're doing the same, you're doing the same thing. I mean, it's a, it's sort of a game of which one is sitting over the, the excess lot coverage. Is it the trash dumpster? Is it the recycling dumpster? And which one is triggering that requirement? So, you know, it, it seems like it might be okay if the understanding is to apply this in such a way that all additional required dumpster space, essentially.
And I, I think you could do that if you remove is required to be obtained, or is required to be. I, I don't know that, I, I can tell you that I didn't consider this when drafting this. So I, I don't want there to be any unintended consequences.
Are we under any time pressure here with this, that we couldn't give you time to clarify this and, and come back and just make sure there's not an unintended consequence of, of...
No, I don't, I don't believe there's any applications or requests that are pressing or pending.
Yeah, we could adopt this and then still come back with further language.
Yeah, with a subsequent amendment. Is there, just go through the process for that?
We could do that as well.
If there's any questions, bring them out.
Okay, all right. That's, that's reasonable, but no, that's a, that's a good question. And that was a useful discussion. So in that case, then, having, having considered this and asked the questions, a, a motion would be in order to approve this with also direction to staff that they consider the placement of, of recycling dumpsters and bring back any revisions if necessary.
Is that moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? So the, the, the motion will be to approve this as it is and then to direct staff to consider the, the recycling question. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, appreciate that. Then you will stay there. We will move to reports and recommendations from the planning board and the Planning and Development Director, and starting with the update.
Thank you. Just a, a few items to go over. I'm happy to answer any, I, the questions about anything that I don't cover. We've released an RFQ for the Estory and Shoreline Management Plan. Responses are due July 7th. So we're excited to, to work on that project. And I expect that we will, well, we do need your blessing to begin advertising for volunteers for an advisory and steering committee, if the Board would like us to do that. And then we can bring names back to you at some time in the future.
Okay. Board, can we do that by, by affirmation, simply to direct staff to begin advertising? Very well. I see, I see shaking heads, so yes.
Thank you. Outdoor dining, we, we do intend to come back to you at some point in the future, but we'll work with the planning board, as the board discussed at the last meeting, on a potential text amendment that allows for some flexible options to, for temporary outdoor dining considerations outside of a declared state of emergency or relating to the effects of that, something that is a little bit, maybe can be applied seasonally during normal years. I think the board previously wanted to make sure that parking was a consideration with respect to that. Outdoor lighting, I think there was at least a question or, or interest in the note in staff's report about outdoor miniature lights. So currently, the code prohibits outdoor miniature lights on strings except from mid-November until mid-January, provided that such lighting does not create glare or is a nuisance to adjacent properties. I don't think we so much had a question about that, but we're seeing more and more string lights that are not necessarily considered miniature lights. And, you know, and I'm speaking strictly about commercial properties, not residential properties. And we've talked about this internally, myself and Ms. Wyatt, with our code enforcement officer. And he does have a concern about whether or not those are or are not precluded by the miniature lights on strings, because they're not, the bulbs are not miniature. They're normal-sized, essentially bulbs. And I think it would be complicated if we were to try to enforce this against those. But also in conversations with the planning board, at least aesthetically, they indicated that, that was not perceived to be an issue. So I think we wanted to get some perspective from the Board of Commissioners as to how they wanted to proceed with respect to those. Did they want us to look at any amendment to address those, allow them, limit them? So any perspectives about those would be appreciated.
I appreciate the clarification that it's for commercial.
Yes, sir.
To me, it may be I misread it, but I, I thought it could pertain to residential, so I'm happy to hear that it was for commercial. I personally have not seen or heard of an issue dealing with miniature lights or...
String lights. Sure, thank you.
I have had the opportunity to be sitting in Andy's seat, where we've had to deal with that in the past. And it was at a time where people were using a lot of miniature lights, and particularly, they were palm trees that were placed up all over different properties that had miniature lights all over them. And this is before your time, but where they became what the town considered inappropriate lighting. So I do think at some level, miniature lights can be an issue, depending on how much they are. It's not a matter of the miniature lights, it's the, it's the quantity of them that becomes an issue.
So if I understand the earlier discussion, we have a regulation about miniature lights and when they can be used at businesses. If we want to continue ministerial decisions without interpretation, we need to decide at what point a bulb becomes miniature.
Yes, sir. I, I think that's the, the challenge that staff has had.
Okay.
Good point. Touche.
And, and I don't disagree. I think the concern is that you could have a series of string lights, you know, coming off the corner of a building, illuminating an outdoor area. And I think aesthetically, I think a lot of people appreciate that, like it. But then maybe there becomes a time, a point where perhaps there's excessive light.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know, we've not, as far as I'm, I'm aware, received any complaints with regard to these types of lights. It's, just seems to be a gray area at this time.
I think, if, if I could kind of put it succinctly, it was like normal use, like you say, I don't think there, you will ever see, but it's like Christmas. And then people taking what they do for Christmas, which we tend to ignore, I hope rightfully so, but then they leave it up all year.
Well, I mean, I, I appreciate the concern. I guess I would say until we actually saw something that we decided was a problem, then we could decide what the definition of that problem was, whether it was quantity, or lighting level, or bulb size, or whatever it may be. But I, I think we're just speculating until we have a circumstance that we'd say that's crossed the line.
And I think that's fair. I think we, we wanted to make sure we weren't in a position of interpreting. We, we wanted to definitively recognize that miniature truly met small Christmas light-type bulb, and that we were enforcing this provision against those, or with those in mind, and that we were not ignoring these other conditions. And I think, so I think that's perfectly fine. I think that clarifies it for staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think finally, bear with me one second. We've had this item for update in our report for a few months now, but basically, and completely understand why it was not a priority, we actually delayed discuss, discussing it with the planning board until last fall, just because it wasn't appropriate to address last summer. But this was something that we had talked about with the board. The board had given us some direction to investigate or, or look into a registration program for events held at residential properties. And we did that with the planning board. This is not dissimilar to the provision that DUC uses. And I understand that there may be some interest in the board in us revisiting this or continuing this discussion. So happy to move forward on this in any way that the board likes. And you could look at it in one of two ways. You could look at a event registration program for residential properties, or throughout the last year and longer, I think there's some improvements that could be made to Chapter Four with respect to amusements, entertainments, mass gatherings. And I know that there's probably some room to improve that with respect to certain free speech activities as well that we've encountered before. So we could, again, look at it in a limited way, or look to do a, a complete update of Chapter Four and incorporate something along these lines.
Let me ask, when, when we had this discussion, there were a couple of houses in town that were causing a problem. They, they had had big events with, I think the police or code enforcement had had to go out to these. And it was consistent that, you know, they were, they were causing problems. Has that continued? Well, I guess COVID sort of may have had an effect on all of it. Because I would, I actually realize now, that was longer ago than I thought, because that would have been the summer before COVID, because COVID kind of shut all of that down. So we don't know at this point if those properties are continuing to be problematic.
I'd have to defer the, to Chief Webster. I'm, I've not heard any specific complaints.
We've had, we've received some noise once from some of the usual suspects, the varsity, uh, Florida manholes.
Okay, right. Thank you.
It occurred to me that, that started with the weekend rentals, the big house weekend rentals. There were a couple, there were some houses that did three-day event things. That's where it started, if my, not a mistake.
Right.
And I would say that's going to probably come back this year, because last year was an anomaly.
Yes. Mayor, I brought this up there in my meeting with the interim manager yesterday, just for the fact that it's been in our staff report for months. I figured we could either take action on it, so it's gone and it doesn't continue to add to his report each month. And if, if not, that's the reason why I brought it up.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a thought about which direction it should go in terms of either just dropping it off for now, or opposing to resolve?
Much like the lights, if there's a problem, let's use it. If not, I don't see a need to, but I did tell the interim manager yesterday, don't set a time limit of 30 days, it must be done, because we're not going to hold anybody to that. We don't hold them for crowd gathering permits. They turn in a permit a week before the event, and we accept it and roll on. And everybody has to rush to accommodate someone failing to turn in their forms in a timely manner. So don't, don't, don't even say 30 days, because we're not going to hold them to it.
Okay. So... So, Commissioners, what's your wish? Do you want to wait and see what develops and target that problem?
See if it comes back.
In a similar fashion? Okay.
I agree, I mean, I think we should just wait, there's no need to try to create a rule if the problem's gone away.
Agreed, or if we don't know the exact nature of it, because after a year of COVID, the whole nature of what the events look like could come back differently, and we don't know what that looks like yet. So, yeah, it sounds like we want to wait on that again, until we see the problem and can define it.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mike.
Fair, thank you, I appreciate it.
May I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask a question about one of the updates on your, and this one I guess sticks with me. We seem to not be able to get our CAMA land use plan adopted. And we seem to be the only community that I'm aware of that takes years to get a CAMA land use plan adopted, and I don't understand the problem. I mean, I get reports all the time, every other community that's been adopted, is it our plan, is it the UDO? I mean, what is it that is sticking that we cannot seem to resolve the CAMA land use plan?
Yeah, so I think this last meeting was very helpful. We had Greg Sparks, Andy Garman, and myself had a meeting with DCM staff, with Mr. Davis and Tankard, and talked about the comments that they had returned, and basically how they were confusing how we needed to move forward, and I think we gained a lot of clarity. And I think we have a good path forward, and so what they did then is sat down directly with Holly White, and we, and basically they went over explicitly what the changes were going to be. I think part of the concern that we had is that some of the comments that we were receiving would have required a number of policy changes in our comprehensive plan that I don't know would have been acceptable to the board. They would have required a level of specificity that I don't think we would have been able to find any agreed outcome to. And it made the plan more of a regulatory document than I believe the town and this board would like it to be, with a lot, with respect to a lot of different policies. And we understand we're not necessarily unique in that way, in terms of plans that are reviewed by DCM, and recently there was a permitting situation in Kill Devil Hills that the outcome of that, or the issues associated with that were the exact result of similar comments on their plan. And I think they really highlighted the concern that I was having about the comments that we were being asked to make, or the comments that we were receiving with changes that we were being asked to make. So that really clarified the concern that we were having, and how we needed to move forward, and I think DCM staff agreed and understood the concerns that we had. But I don't believe, given my understanding of the reviews that are taking place in our area, that unfortunately or unfortunately, that it's taking significantly longer than some other communities, that's my understanding. And I, you know, we've proceeded past the completeness stage, I believe, last fall, and went to state review, and result of state review were approximately 60 comments returned, and the majority of those comments were from DCM staff that I had assumed would have been addressed during the completeness review, but that was not the case. And the majority of those comments related to the specificity of policies that they wished to use as regulatory policies because of a question that we were asked under the completeness stage. It's a complicated process, as I'm sure you understand, and I think they are learning a lot through our experience and vice versa. So, I'm hoping that we can bring it back to the board in the next couple of months for local adoption.
May I comment on what one of the problems is?
Yes.
And it's a historical problem that I'm sure Commissioner Cahoon knows, but we use our policy statements as policies, and then we adopt our management tools, which is in the UDO. Coastal management uses the land use plan as a management tool, so the less specificity it has in it, the more it requires them to, guess what?
Interpret.
Make an interpretation, which, guess what, they're not allowed to do. They're only allowed to make determinations, and there's a difference between a determination and an interpretation. So, they want as much specificity as possible, although my understanding is, is that the land use plan is the local community's land use plan, and what we present, if it isn't in any conflict with coastal management, they should, by default, receive it and accept it. They can ask for more specificity, but we don't have to give more specificity.
That's my point. We don't seem to be moving forward, we seem to be going around the horn, curving around, and it is our plan, if it meets our guidelines, and it doesn't violate any state statutes, it should be adopted, and it shouldn't take four and five years to get it done.
Well, what we learned in the meetings is what Plan Director Zainer and Commissioner Fuller have stated, is that they're using it as a regulatory document, so they're going through and looking at every policy to see how they would interpret it, or to make a determination if they're reviewing a permit with which they have jurisdiction over. And so in this last meeting, we were told that, oh, all you have to do is tell us which policies you want us to interpret or not, and then we'll just do it that way. And so, we were never given that option before, and so now we're going through the policies and saying, okay, well, this one could potentially be used as a regulatory policy, all these others won't be, and so there's no need to look at those when you're reviewing a CAMA major permit. And there's probably only two policies in the whole document that could even conceivably be a regulatory policy. One of those was in there forever, it's upland excavations. But other than that, none of those policies were really written or designed to be regulatory policies.
Yeah, and I was going to say, there literally were only two policies that I think we felt needed to be used as regulatory provisions by DCM. So, I agree, there, between January and February, and perhaps even March, we were spinning around, and I think in the last month and a half, we've kind of broken out of that cycle and got good direction, and, you know, we appreciate guidance from DCM, how to get through that, and it was a good discussion that we've had with them, so.
All right. Well, we look forward to having the plan back here in a month or two.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think that's it unless there's any other.
On the update?
Yes, sir.
Then you have one additional item?
So, a few months back, well, it's probably almost a year now, we were featured as a case study in a document, a guide developed by the American Flood Coalition. Generally, it was related to our groundwater lowering practices, and then subsequent to that, in March, David Ryan and Mayor Cahoon participated in a virtual webinar presented by the American Flood Coalition, I believe with other representatives from the Netherlands and as well as communities in Florida that were dealing with flooding and looking at unique ways to address that. Subsequent to that, through the mayor, the American Flood Coalition requested that the town become a member of the organization. Currently, there are 254 members from 20 states. There are, bear with me one second, I believe there's 70-odd communities, and it's growing every week, of cities and counties that are member communities, and some of our peer communities that are in South Carolina and Florida, and I think they're attempting to grow their presence northward from there in North Carolina and Virginia, and I believe we would be the second member community in North Carolina. But we provided some backup material on the organization and on their mission, and a resolution to consider joining. I don't know if the mayor had any addition.
Yeah, I'll also speak to that. When David and I were on that webinar, which was sponsored by the Flood Coalition and the Embassy of the Netherlands, we had an international audience, and so we got to highlight the work of Nag's Head in front of a pretty sophisticated audience of people. And what I subsequently learned about this American Flood Coalition is that this gives us a vehicle for activity at the national level. It's not unlike the way Oceana was helpful with the fly-ins and the opportunities to testify at Congress and to be before briefing panels at Congress when we were talking about offshore oil drilling, that when we're talking about flood issues and how we mitigate them, that this gives us an opportunity to go and talk to Congress as well, and to ask for their support and potentially funding and other kinds of resources, along with other people who are in similar communities doing similar kinds of exercises. So, there's no obligation for us, there's just an opportunity for us to join with others and get support for the kind of activities that we're already doing. So that's why, when I received that invitation, I had forwarded it to Michael and asked him to look into the organization, whether it would be beneficial.
Do you need a motion to join?
I do.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution that would, that would in fact make a member by resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Michael, bringing that forward. I would suggest, I've seen a couple of folks get up, I would suggest that we take about a 10-minute recess, so the board will be in recess. Okay, the board has returned from its recess. The next item on our agenda is item I, old business tabled from previous meetings, and this would be our second reading of the consideration of the municipal service districts, and I'll call on Andy.
Okay. So, essentially, at last month's meeting, we had the first reading for proposed municipal service districts. As you can see on the screen, we've got four proposed districts, in addition to the two that we already have. Just summarizing those real quick, District Three essentially extends from Bonnet Street to Gulf Stream Way from US 158 East, and also encompasses the oceanfront, which is already in District One. District Four includes everything in South Nag's Head from Gulf Stream Way to the southern town limits, and that also includes all the properties in District Two. We have two new districts in the northern part of town, north of Bonnet Street and north of where we've nursed in the past. I believe District Six runs from 158 to the oceanfront, from Bonnet Street to the northern town limits, and then you have District Five, which mirrors that, just includes properties from NC 12 East. So, the proposed municipal service districts, we're obviously required by statute to have two readings of this ordinance. You heard the presentation last month on the ordinance and includes the reasons why we need to do these districts. Speaking with the town clerk, we really only received one email comment, the board received that back in April, so you've already seen that from Mr. Jeremy Thomas, and then you received comments at your meeting last month, and other than that, we have not received any additional comments on the MSDs since that time. And just sort of going through the ordinance, we've got, the purpose is established, you know, as authorized by the general statutes, beach erosion control is the primary purpose, flood and hurricane protection works, and also drainage improvements are the reasons why we're establishing these districts. The findings in the ordinance that you'll note, projects, these projects provide benefits to the properties within these districts to a greater extent than other parts of town. The projects that we conduct protect the roadways, which provide access, the utilities, the septic systems, beach accesses, and provide flood control and drainage in these areas to a greater extent than they would in other parts of the town, and benefit these properties to a greater extent. Also noted is these properties are assessed at a greater value due to their proximity to the ocean and receive direct benefits not received by other property owners. As also noted in the ordinance, the town will continue to experience conditions that warrant beach protection efforts. These projects will need to continue into the foreseeable future, and we have conducted drainage projects, particularly with respect to the ocean outfalls, there will be an ongoing need for maintenance and improvements, and that's the primary example that we're citing related to drainage in the ordinance. So, as I stated previously, I think the main point to this is that we're doing this because these property owners benefit to a greater extent, and therefore we're establishing an MSD in order to distribute the cost with the benefits to property owners in the town. I believe the advertising requirements have been met, the notification requirements, all statutory requirements have been met at this point, and the last thing that the board needs to do is conduct a second reading and vote on this one final time.
Great, thank you, and I will also add that the board had expressed concern about reaching out to the community and carrying this message to the community about the creation of these districts and the rates, and after consultation with our PIO, Roberta Thumann, she and I produced a video with some additional help from Benny Baldwin, which talked about the districts. That was posted, has been available for the public to view, so there's no reason why someone who wanted to know the information about the districts and the purposes and the rates, not, the proposed rates, not to have been able to find that information at this point, I believe. And, you know, I have wondered about the feedback, and the difference in beach nourishment and a lot of other things that we tax people for is the visibility and the tangibility of what we do on the beach, and I think that that's what makes it such an accepted practice for us, that people really do understand and they see, they know that their money is actually getting spent out there on the beach, and appreciate it. So, you know, I look forward to us reading and adopting this, hopefully today. Any comments, anybody? So I believe a motion to adopt would properly include, Andy, correct me on this, or John, would include the reading of the facts that are on page? Which page is this? It's not telling me. Page three? Under now therefore be further ordained? Defines same as fact?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance establishing and creating for Nag's Head Beach Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Protection Works and Drainage Projects Municipal Service Districts. And furthermore, now therefore be further ordained by the Nag's Head Board of Commissioners for the town of Nag's Head, that one, the town of Nag's Head has fully complied with each and every requirement of Chapter 160A, Article 23 of the North Carolina General Statutes, needed to define and create each of the districts defined below and determines and finds same as a fact. Two, the Nag's Head Beach Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Works, Hurricane Protection Works and Drainage Projects Municipal Service Districts for Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Works are hereby defined for Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Works are hereby defined and created pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-537 in accordance with the following description. District Three encompassing all property situated east of South Croatan Highway between Bonnet Street and Gulf Stream Street slash South Virginia Dare Trail. District Four encompassing all property situated between Gulf Stream Street slash South Virginia Dare Trail and Southern Town Limits. District Five encompassing all property situated east of South Virginia Dare Trail between Eighth Street and Bonnet Street. District Six encompassing all property situated east of South Croatan Highway between Eighth Street and Bonnet Street and being the property as shown within the boundaries set forth on that certain map attached heretofore as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, to which reference is made for a more complete and accurate description of the boundaries of the Nag's Head Beach Erosion Control and Flood and Hurricane Protection Works and Drainage Projects Municipal Service Districts as defined in this ordinance. Three, the town of Nag's Head may engage in any or all of those activities that may be lawfully be conducted within municipal service district defined and created pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 160A-536, parentheses A, parentheses One, parentheses Three, and to provide beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works and drainage projects. Four, the town may also levy property taxes within the service districts in addition to those throughout the town in order to finance, provide, or maintain for the districts services provided therein in addition to or to a greater extent than those financed, provided, or maintained for the entire town.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And thank you, Commissioner, for reading that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. And that is something that's been a couple of years coming. Yes, yes, indeed, indeed. Well, this, again, like Commissioner Fuller's observations about the budget earlier, this plan, I think, creates some stability for the town's beach nourishment process going forward. And that's the intent. And this is a good day. Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be new business, and that would be committee reports. I'll start to my left, Commissioner Sears. Commissioner, continue.
We did have our first in-person meeting for the GovAir TV channel committee and reviewed all the expenditures and income, and income is gradually creeping back up. But the only thing that affects the income is in more communities that participate in the sharing of that revenue, the money drops for each community because the more pieces of the pie, the less there is to be distributed.
Yep, very good. Commissioner Brinkley?
We had the first in-person Jeanette's Pier Advisory Committee meeting in 18 months. Earlier in May, the inter-manager, Garmin, and I attended. A lot of big things are happening at Jeanette's Pier. One, we were told about, which was the Waves to Water, the competition that's going to be held in April of next year, bringing in people from all over the country, really, that's going to be participating in that. We also had a presentation from Lindsey Dubs and Mike Muglia from CSI about studies that they're doing there at the beach. And Mayor, at the appropriate time, I'd like to ask you if it would be appropriate to bring them in for maybe just a 15-minute presentation. I told them nothing too in-depth, but just to give an overview of some of the exciting things that are happening at Jeanette's Pier. They've done a lot of repairs from previous hurricane. They've been completed. And they're steadily starting to rent the hall back again for gatherings for weddings and so forth. I don't know, Andy, have you got anything to add?
No, I mean, I agree. It was a great meeting. Exciting thing they're looking at conducting is more of a strategic planning effort, looking at the next few years and what they're going to be doing and what their goals are. And so it'll be interesting for the committee to participate in that as well and be part of that.
All right, very good. Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Commissioner Fuller?
Nothing that's not already on the agenda.
Okay, all right, very good. And I will take this opportunity to remind folks that Friday morning is the, at the pier, is the event where the Coast Guard will recognize one of our Ocean Rescue Crew, Austin Fallon, for his dramatic rescue. And I'm excited to see one of our staff get that level of recognition, very well deserved. Next item on our agenda, then, is consideration of appointment to the Arts and Culture Committee. And you have the table of vacancies and appointments before you. And I'm not looking at it at the moment, but my recollection is that the folks were interested in being reappointed. Is that correct? So either that or additional names, and I'll ask the board.
I make a motion, will you reappoint Jenny Flowers and Samantha Locke?
Second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. And Carolyn, if you will prepare letters for them to thank them for continued service.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any policy reasons for having restrictions on the timeframes that people can be on the Arts and Culture Committee? So, I mean, because some of them say they're not eligible for reappointment?
That just means their terms are up. They're not up to reappoint yet.
That's right.
That, okay.
Standing member in.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
So we're reappointing everybody that we can.
Yes.
And nobody is being eliminated.
Correct.
Thank you.
Nobody's eliminated by time of service.
Okay, I mean, I just misread the thing.
Yeah, that is confusing.
Okay.
Yes, that wording. Thank you.
Perhaps that wording should, instead of saying eligible for free appointments, say, instead of saying no, term not unexpired.
Right, yes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a renewal of a contract with Kildalville Hills for maintenance of the Eighth Street Beach Access. And Andy?
Okay. So the town of Nag's Head, for some time, has had a memorandum of understanding with Kildalville Hills to maintain the Eighth Street Beach Access. The costs are generally shared for maintaining the access, although over the years, I think Nag's Head has borne more the brunt of the cost. We use our staff to maintain the access. And the agreement really just covers an annual payment to us for that, for those costs. And also, if there's repairs that are needed to the structures or the parking lot, then those will be worked out between the parties. Greg Sparks and I sat down with Debbie Diaz and went over the agreement and found some things that we thought should be adjusted. So we've suggested those in here, in the agreement you have in your packet. The annual payment, we suggested going from $500 to $1,000. And they've agreed to that. My understanding is they've already adopted this agreement on their side. And then there was some language in there that talked about repair or replacement of structures after a storm or damage, that we would work out the costs and split those costs between the two parties. We felt like that it should really speak to any time something is replaced, whether it's due to storm damage or just normal wear and tear, that we should work out those costs. The annual payment is really just for our time. And that if we have to repair a beach access or rebuild it, we should be splitting those costs. And so we've suggested changing that language. And certainly based on some of the recent pricing we've had for beach access replacement, we really need to make sure we're covered on that. And they were certainly open to all of this. And then, like I said, they already adopted it. So we're just asking the board to approve this for the town.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Motion to adopt is presented.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thanks, staff, for your attention to this and really getting this on balance where it needed to be so that those kinds of issues would be covered.
Very good, thank you.
All right, so hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consideration of the Police Officer Recruit Program. Chief Webster?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for considering this program. The Police Department would like to initiate a Police Officer Recruit Program. Previously, we furnished you all with a memo outlining the program, a proposed job classification, and a training repayment agreement. The department recruits from a shrinking pool of police candidates. I think everybody kind of realizes that. And a lot of challenges with hiring staff, including basic, fewer basic law enforcement-trained certified graduates. There's a general lack of interest in law enforcement as a career nationwide. And increased cost of living in outer banks and competition with local agents makes it difficult to recruit. Right now, I think we've had a job flyer out for about 60 days, and we've had one qualified candidate apply for the position. As evidenced, there's a number of growing, of graduating BLET students trending upward from a low point in 2016. That was post-Ferguson. It kind of went up to 2019, and it tanked last year as far as officers attending BLET and graduating statewide. Offering a recruit program allows the town to hire an officer who is not certified through BLET. It expands our pool of candidates and gives us a little more selectivity, attract diversity, and gives it opportunity to individuals who cannot afford to acquire certification on their own. And what I mean by that is it's a 640-hour program. And folks are pretty much having to quit their jobs to attend this program and be successful. Now, there have been, over the years, some night courses, some things like that added in, where you can work part-time. In fact, when I went through BLET, a lot of the folks in class with me worked part-time. And a few dropped out because they just couldn't afford to sustain attending BLET with work. And it also opens up an opportunity for current town employees who wish to switch over and become police officers, have an avenue to do that. And I know we've done that in the past with some of our staff. Once again, the program will allow us to hire uncertified individuals who will fill an open police position. So this is not a new, quote-unquote, "new" job position. The only time we would hire a recruit is if we had an open police position. They would be hired in a grade four. The recruit's job will be to complete BLET, the 640-hour BLET course, and pass the state exam. Once they cross those two hurdles, then we can promote them to a grade seven, the current grade for an entry-level police officer. And then they would start a 12-month probationary period, a new 12-month probationary period at that time. I can take any questions that y'all might have on the program or how we might administer it.
Commissioner Brinkley, I want to turn to you first.
Did you mention any of the questions that I had?
I did.
Okay. First, I think it's, I think it can be a good program. It's nothing new. It's been used here for years. We asked about doing something years ago, and it was not approved. But I think it can be a good program if it is administered correctly.
Right, yes, sir.
Much like the Take Home Vehicle Program. If it's not administered correctly, it's not going to work. But just a couple of questions. A vehicle, there's a town employee, will they be given a vehicle to drive?
I think it would have to be very much case by case. I mean, I would have to be in consult with the town manager. I'd hope to avoid that at all costs. I think if we, if we make the location of BLET the primary job station, we kind of avoid some of those hurdles.
Right.
But it would be, it would be a last-case scenario for issuing a take-home car. I know Kitty Hawk currently furnishes a car. And I'm not saying that I'm on board with that or not. I just think it's an option.
Okay. When you talk about an employee that, I'm sorry, a trainee or cadet that does not complete the program, and I think you said due to illness, injury, family emergency, may be retained and sent back through the BLET program at the discretion of the Police Department. I think it needs to be spelled out that it's you. And then my other question is, if they fail, if they flunk out, they fail their fourth test, they're out of the program, are we going to keep them and send them back through the next program? Or?
I think we would really have to take a serious look on the failure. Was it a fatal failure? I know that you can retest. And as long as it's not a fatal failure, then you would have to go back through it. I think we'd have to give some serious consideration of that. What brought that failure on? There might be some factors in there. I did put in there, you know, if someone was sick or family emergency, those kind of things, where they just couldn't complete the course. I mean, we run a big risk to hold that slot open for that amount of time again.
I think that's an important, important thing to consider. And then the last thing, and this came up many years ago from a department that had a repayment agreement. It's like I explained to the inter-manager yesterday, when you have somebody that is here and they've got a two-year contract, and they don't want to be here. They've got, they can go to Kildalville Hills, or they can go to Raleigh and make more money, and they don't want to be here. My question is, and I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, do we really want them here as part of our team when they don't want to be here? I know we got an agreement, we can hold them to it. But, again, I'm not saying to change the agreement. I just wanted to throw it out there that...
I see the point.
Oh, yes, sir. Do you truly want them here? But other than that, I think it will hopefully add to your recruitment pool.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fuller, I'm on this side.
I have two points. One, you said this wouldn't be a new position. In my opinion, what is being asked of us is to create new positions with new job descriptions. So, in fact, it would be a new position, and it would have a new job description. And if I'm not mistaken, that's exactly what you're asking for.
Well, we wouldn't be going from a...
I'm not talking about number of personnel.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking about it is a new position.
Yes, sir. I see what you're saying.
Because you said it wouldn't be a new position. But I just want to make clear that it is a new position with a new job description, and that's what we adopt. How you fill those positions is entirely up to you.
Yes, sir, I understand that, yes, sir.
Okay. And then the next is probably more for the attorney. And that is, we had a similar situation a number of years ago where we tried to do something similar to this. And we were advised by the town attorney that we should not enter into contractual relationships with anybody else that's an employee of the town other than the town manager. And that because you do not want to have a contractual relationship that provides certain rights beyond what a normal at-will employee will provide. And I kept trying to read everything you wrote, and I think you covered everything. But at the same, at the same point in time, it's still a contract.
Yes, and the, well, first of all, I haven't reviewed this particular contract. I didn't get it until yesterday. But, so I can't comment on its specific terms. But I can say this, you can have a contract with an employee that makes clear that it does not change the employment at-will or the at-will nature of the employment. So that can be done. But, and I will also say this, these kinds of contracts are not that uncommon. These training or repayment agreements for this, for this exact situation. I know a number of other municipalities have used these contracts with varying success in enforcement and collection. I did have a case several years ago where one of my clients had to sue two former employees who left and failed to comply with their obligations under this. And we settled the case during the trial, but the judge made it clear that they were going to uphold the contracts. So, I mean, that's not a reported decision, but it demonstrated a court's inclination towards enforcing one of these, which did make clear that there was an at-will nature of the employment. But that was one where, again, it was a descending amount that the employee had to repay over time. And at some point, the total amount was forgiven. So, you know, it worked that way.
I mean, and I guess this is in form of a question. I would prefer to create a new position with a new job description, but not have a contractual arrangement, but maybe have some sort of understanding. But I don't like us moving toward contractual arrangements with employees.
And I understand that. Mr. Lighty, just, I did receive this from you. I've just, this is Elizabeth City's contract.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I did send you, I'm sorry, I thought you had a new one. I hadn't reviewed it, so I didn't realize I'd written the contract.
You've written it, but you just haven't reviewed it?
And this is the one, this is the one that the court said they were going to uphold. And, you know, just a few years ago. So I'm comfortable with the, with that contract in this, in this situation. I understand, I understand the reluctance to have a contractual relationship with an employee, but as long as it doesn't create a right to continued employment, I mean, one thing about it is, every employment is contractual in nature. The chief has no written contract, but he's got a contract of employment with the town. It's just terminable at-will of either party. So, you know, it's a, it's a contractual relationship. This simply recites and confirms the terms under which someone's hired and makes very thing, several things clear, including what happens in the event that the person does not stay for the promised period of time, does not deprive the city of the town of the ability to dismiss them in the meantime, but also makes clear that in the event that they leave voluntarily without cause, that they will, there will be some remuneration they have to pay back to the town.
I'm understanding what it says.
Yeah. And one more thing I'll say, and I don't, I have not had this conversation with the chief, I don't believe. I've had this with some other chiefs. Some people have been concerned that this is a turnoff to new recruits. And I understand that. That's a, that's a practical consideration. But again, they are becoming pretty common. And so I don't know, I don't know how much of a turnoff that really is. I do know that most departments, particularly outside of Dare County, have a devil of a time recruiting and retaining new officers. I mean, there's a shortage in pretty much every town I'm aware of in the eastern part of the state. I was in Charlotte two years ago and heard that they had eight hundred vacancies in the Charlotte PD. Like, I mean, it's just shocking. So, I mean, what it takes to recruit and retain people is a policy consideration, and I think you have to be somewhat creative to do that.
Chief, you mentioned Killable Hills. So does Killable, you know, in the car discussion about, so does Killable Hills have this?
Kitty Hawk.
Kitty Hawk.
Kitty Hawk.
Yes, sir.
Kitty Hawk has this kind of arrangement.
Yes, sir. But they don't have a, they don't have a formalized program. And I was just trying to make something that was formalized. You know, it's just something they're sort of doing in-house and, you know, handling as far as a take-home car and that type of stuff. And certainly, this would survive without this agreement, I believe. You know, if the board has, you know, some heartburn over the agreement.
Well, I'm in favor of being creative. I don't, I understand the concerns about contractual arrangements, but I also would want the town to be protected if somebody decided to walk away from the opportunity and we had invested in them. And I don't know how else you'd do that.
Yeah, and I think our fear, and it could happen, is someone, you know, they go to BLET, they pass that state exam, and then they walk.
Right.
I'm not so worried about the couple of years after. It's the immediacy where you get that carrot thrown in your face, and you decide that, hey, you know, I can go to X, Y, Z agency and...
Yeah? Of course.
But with the pay-in-class and what we're trying to do with the employees, that may eliminate the, I mean, they may not want to go anywhere else.
Right. And we might find ourselves not having the post for non-certified police officers. I mean, it could turn out that when we do our pay-in-class study that we don't even need this. But at least it would be there if we ever decided we did, we did need it.
I agree entirely with Commissioner Brinkley. If we do what I think we're trying to do, then we will get officers, and we'll get officers we're proud of, and that they'll be proud to work for the town in Nag's Head, and we won't have to worry about losing officers.
You know, one observation I'll make, and I would like for Commissioner Brinkley to weigh in on this. Several years ago, and I mean, probably at least fifteen years ago, my understanding was that in the Dare County community, police officers, well, the towns had a lot of difficulty retaining officers, and that there was a lot of fluidity from one department to the other, and that a town would adopt new benefits or better benefits than the other towns had, and there would be...
Withdrawal.
Yeah, there'd be a withdrawal. There would be an exodus. And I don't know if that's changed in the last, in the last fifteen years, if that's still an issue. But it used to be that people were very sensitive to different pay rates and different benefit packages from the different towns, and you're competing against, you know, so many different locations here. But that is something I think that's worth considering. If that's not quite the case anymore, then that might also be significant.
I think it's important to remain competitive. I mean, you've got to look after your own. And if this board can do it, and the chief can attract a favorable candidate pool, I mean, that's...
And I, Commissioner Brinkley's a lot more familiar than I am, but there is still some movement among departments. I look at it primarily, the Sheriff's, Sheriff Department tends to be more of a training ground, mainly because they pay less than other departments do. And then you get officers that have different values in terms of what they like to do and not like to do, without trying to get too deeply involved in different communities. But the policing activities like in DUC are entirely different than the policing activities that are in Nag's Head. And some people would rather be in Nag's Head because of certain aspects of the job versus in DUC because of certain aspects of the job. And we have had times where, you know, two hundred dollars made a difference to people. They would go from one department to another because all they did was, all they did was change uniforms, and they didn't have to pay for the uniform. And then the town was left with, like, just as simple as a bulletproof vest, and then nobody else could use that bulletproof vest because it was for them. So I still think we have a little bit of that, but I don't think, do you agree we don't have as much of that as we used to?
Well, I will tell you, the year that I retired, we'd lost several officers to DUC. And I think, and Deputy Chief Hale can correct me if I'm wrong, I think some of those officers would like to come back to Nag's Head if they can make the money that they're making up there.
Right.
You know, policing is totally, totally different. They like Nag's Head, but when they could make the amount of money they're making up there to do the job that they're asked to do, I mean, they had to protect their family. And I think that was the case. And I still believe that if it could be more attractive here, we may gain one of those officers back.
One of the discussions you'll probably end up having later when we have the presentation from Becky Vizi, and Commissioner Cahoon and Commissioner Sears had this discussion with the committee, is that, you know, how do you, how do you recognize outside experience when you bring somebody into an agency? And that's just a question. And, and so it may be something we have a discussion about with Becky. And I, and I don't know what the historical practice is. I know, like, for certain departments at the town, Public Works being one, you bring in somebody, Facilities Maintenance, you're bringing them in at the bottom, and they're working their way up. And, you know, you know, so just being able to recognize some outside experience or years of service when you're setting their initial salary, that might be something to talk about.
Okay. Well, one, okay, so I'm wondering what to do with this item. Since we, we think we may gain some traction by adopting the pay-in-classification study. I'm also wondering, let me, I'm just going to put this out here and see, because I understand the concerns about the contract. Is there any value to authorizing this as a pilot for up to three hires or some number to see how it works and to see what happens with the pay-in-classification study and whether we get traction both ways?
You see, the reason why we can't go ahead and, if you want to set a time limit, but go ahead and approve the program, I mean, to me, the attorney has addressed the agreement, in my opinion. And then set, set an end date, you know, that, let's try it for a timeframe.
Okay.
And we create positions, and we eliminate positions. Nobody else does that.
Okay.
So what you're saying fits.
Okay. All right.
But I don't know that you set a time, timeframe. I think you create the position, and if it's not necessary, then you get rid of the position.
Then it dies.
Right. And it dies.
I don't think you put a timeframe on it.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, then a motion would be in order.
I would make a motion that we approve the job description as presented, and if my memory is correct, that that would be at a grade four.
Yes, sir.
And that's it. That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
And with that includes the appropriate budget fund. I mean, it's got to be funded.
If we're not going to create any new positions, in my opinion, it's already funded.
With the salary from the vacant position be used?
I mean, in other words, we're expecting the police chief not to, we've created new positions, but we haven't created any new people, if that makes sense. So, in my opinion, it's already funded.
Gotcha. Understood. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate that.
I did not make a motion to do a contractual arrangement. I made a motion to approve a job description.
Okay. All right. Then we will proceed on that basis. Next item on our agenda is storm debris removal, and I'll call David.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So annually, the town of Nag's Head prepositions a agreement for debris removal and debris monitoring services. That term usually runs from July one through July thirtieth of each year. And currently, we have active agreements with Tetra Tech for debris monitoring services and Santee Modular Homes for debris removal services. And with each one of those agreements, it permits an option to extend those annually based upon the existing terms, conditions, and rates. And it should be noted that these agreements only activate whenever a notice to proceed is issued. So for, one other item I wanted to go ahead and point out, for the debris removal services, you know, since we are remotely located, mobilization is key. And so, under the terms and conditions of that agreement, that contractor has a mobilization time of twenty-four to forty-eight hours once that notice to proceed is issued. So staff would request the extension of those existing agreements with Santee Modular Homes as well as with Tetra Tech for debris monitoring services. And the, we would request a motion for the interim town manager to go ahead and execute, execute those two separate agreements for debris removal and monitoring services. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have regarding those agreements.
Any questions? Mr. Sears? Commissioner Cahoon?
Did we re-advertise it, David, or are we just extending the terms of the current contracts?
We're extending the term to the current contracts.
I just didn't know if we re-advertised for, to see if any local vendors would...
I have a question about that, but I'll, after.
My question's probably simply, you're talking about having somebody local apply or?
Well, my question was going to, because it occurred to me, because I know we've had this discussion before about, about somebody local. And so I started thinking about that. And so let's say we get hit by a hurricane that's severe enough that we require debris removal. If they're too local, they may be in a position where their facilities have been damaged, and it's difficult for them to mobilize, which led me to think about, well, what if you had a major hurricane come up the coast and, and, you know, Sante's facilities were, and equipment were damaged, and it came up and struck us? And so my question, I guess, was, was for future reference, are there any, does anybody do this? And are there any available, are there debris removal companies that would be west of us, let's say? And is there any logic to what I'm asking? And does anybody sort of look at this?
I think as, as far as geographical preferences, and when we go through this procurement process, that although we want to encourage local vendors in order to submit proposals, we can't automatically make that a condition of the agreements that we enter into. There's certain code of federal regulations that prohibit us from having geographical preferences. What we have done is we have talked to these vendors, Santee Modular Homes, to see if they can preposition equipment to the west of us in advance of an event. So what we normally do is we'll contact them. Once we get notification that there is a pending storm coming our way, we will be in contact with them. And as it gets closer, we will go ahead and make a judgment call as to whether they can preposition that equipment, maybe out in Rocky Mount, in order to be able to mobilize within that twenty-four to forty-eight hour period. So informally, yes, we try to cover that on the back end, but that isn't explicitly covered within the terms of the agreement itself.
The request, the requirement for prepositioning hadn't really occurred to me. So that, that addresses wherever they are, and addresses it better than choosing based on where they are.
Right. Last time we advertised, do you remember getting any, when I say local, eastern North Carolina vendors that applied for the...
We did not. We had seven vendors that submitted. Most of those were outside of North Carolina. I think we had one North Carolina vendor, and they were down south. And the last time that we advertised was two thousand twenty for debris removal and two thousand nineteen for debris monitoring.
One last question. Do Santee provide this service to other communities?
They have, and we followed up with references. We got three references, one from Emerald Isle, one from North Carolina Department of Transportation, the Kinston office, and one from Florin, South Carolina. And all had very good references for Santee Modular Homes.
Okay. Commissioner Fuller? Okay. And thinking, thinking about who submits for this, are these generally companies with some experience and expertise in dealing with FEMA regulations for debris hauling and monitoring and disposal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any further?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think I've got the next item on the agenda as well.
That would be, yes, that would be the, excuse me.
Waterline.
Yes, the water lines. Item J six.
Yes, so this is the Engineering Services Task Order for Old Nag's Head Cove asbestos cement or AC water line replacement. This was discussed at this year's CIP workshop. This is a large-scale, neighborhood-level water line replacement project. It's replacing approximately two-point-six miles of six-inch AC water line. And in conjunction with the water line replacement, we're looking at this as more of a holistic approach in trying to fit in other construction elements. And so this project will also include roadway resurfacing as well as drainage improvements to coincide with that water line replacement. The, the focus of the area of replacement is basically south of West Danube Street. Due to the duration of construction because of the large-scale nature, we're looking at approximately sixteen weeks. So what we're trying to do is get out ahead of it and go to construction sooner rather than later. We've already initiated the survey work, which we anticipate will be done by the end of this month. And what we would like to do is proceed with the design services to proceed forward in order to get this project under construction in a fall timeframe. in order to get this project under construction, uh, in a fall timeframe. So, um, there's one thing I wanted to point out, and that was on the agenda summary sheet. I transposed one of the numbers, uh, but for this task order number two, for the engineer-relating services for this project, it's $159,000, $470. I had transposed the seven and the four, so I just wanted to alert you to that. Um, the attachment within the task order number two that accompanies this agenda summary sheet does have the correct number in there. So, uh, the request would be to, uh, for the interim town manager, uh, authorize him to execute this task order number two agreement, uh, to proceed with the design services for the Old Nagshead Cove water line replacement project.
Thank you. Questions for David?
David, are they completed with their surveying already?
They are not. They have established control, and now they're going to go through, mark the utilities, and then map those utilities. So, there's still another two, two and a half weeks left for that, uh, fieldwork to be complete.
Were they using some newer methods?
Uh, y- yes, they were. Um, rather than relying on NC 811 to go ahead and do the underground markings, uh, they have their own in-house personnel in order to be able to map out those underground utilities. Um, it helps to streamline that process. Right now, uh, NC 811, usually, you're looking at a two-to-three-week timeframe from the time that you contact them until they're out there on the ground to be able to mark those out. So, it's, uh, it's a more streamlined approach, um, that they have the capabilities in-house to be able to do that.
Yeah. I- i- if you're lucky. I have a survey I'm waiting on, and the 811 person didn't meet their deadline, and they said, "Please don't turn in another ticket on me, because it's gonna make me look bad. I promise I'll get it in another week." And I don't think we have it yet, so.
You better turn in another ticket.
I think we have to turn in another ticket. So, it's, that's, that's a pretty neat asset that they can do that in-house. And it's a single point of responsibility, so if it's mismarked, um...
That's right.
That's on them.
David, where's the, the money you transposed? You said, where did it come from? Or is it missing off of the payments to the engineer?
On, on the agenda summary sheet, um, I had noted $159,740, when in fact, it's $159,470. So, I just transposed the four and the seven.
Okay. Any other questions for David? Hearing none, then a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I make a motion, uh, to authorize the town manager to execute task order two, Old Nagshead Cove Engineering Services, in the amount of $159,470.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, the next item on our agenda is, um, items referred to and presentations from the town attorney.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, my items, uh, I believe are all encapsulated within the closed-session items that y'all discussed at the, during the agenda discussion.
Very good. Thank you. Then we'll continue and address those at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town manager. Um, and Andy, this would be, start with an update on the July 4th fireworks.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update on the 4th of July fireworks. So, obviously, we're happy to bring those back this year, uh, thanks to the board and the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, which we receive a grant from every year, uh, to pay for half of the fireworks. Uh, the, the fireworks is actually on the Sunday this year, 4th of July. Obviously, it being launched again from Nagshead Pier, uh, and it begins at 9:25 approximately. Staff's been working with, uh, Nagshead Pier owner Andy McCann on planning the event. Uh, we're certainly grateful, uh, to Mr. McCann for his continued willingness to support the event at his facility. Uh, fireworks are being presented by Zambelli, as they have been in the past. Um, we would certainly urge the public to get to their viewing spots early, walk or ride bikes if possible, and remind folks that the personal use of fireworks is prohibited, and please stay safe and civil. Um, and I know, uh, Chief Wells, Deputy Chief Height have been doing a lot of coordinating with, uh, everyone on this event, and thanks to them, uh, they might want to get up and say a few things beyond what I know about this. And also, thanks in advance to Public Works and the police. Uh, they, they put forth a huge effort to put on this event, so we're certainly thankful for them, uh, getting to work on this. And just the last thing I'll say is the rain date would be July 5th. Anything that you guys want to add to that?
Thank you for everything you're willing. We're excited.
They had, they had sent me a, a long logistics plan. I was gonna read this whole thing for them, but I just decided you didn't want to.
Please.
Good.
Good. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Yes. All right, Andy?
So, I, uh, David Ryan's gonna go ahead and take care of number two.
Okay. Um, annually, the town's subcontracts surveying and engineering services, uh, taking the, uh, annual beach survey, um, which is in accordance with the town's beach monitoring and maintenance plan. Last year, we had McKimmon Creed go ahead and conduct the field survey portion, and Moffett and Nickel do the coastal engineering and analysis of that data. Uh, this year, those fee proposals have been submitted for, uh, for surveying by, uh, McKimmon Creed in the amount of $63,100. That is the same amount, uh, of the fee proposal from last year. And then, once that information is acquired, it is then forwarded to Moffett and Nickel, who then analyzes it, evaluates it, and then will prepare a, uh, a report, uh, for that. Moffett and Nickel has submitted a fee proposal in the amount of $57,119, uh, for that analysis portion, and that fee remains unchanged from fiscal year 2021. So, uh, the staff recommends, um, acceptance of the total scope of work by McKimmon Creed, and, uh, acceptance of task 9.1 from, uh, Moffett and Nickel, which just covers the analysis and report of the survey data. Uh, there's also, uh, task 9.2 and 9.3, which are provided in their proposal, which is attached to this agenda summary sheet, which are just provided for reference. Um, we would not be asking you to accept that at this time, but if, in, in the event that there was a storm, uh, that we have that pricing available, uh, that we could use to go ahead and carry that forward, um, with the subsequent board action. So, the, uh, request would be, uh, a, a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a contract, or the, excuse me, the task order agreement, uh, for, um, beach, the beach monitoring survey with McKimmon Creed, and then the analysis and evaluation with Moffett and Nickel. Be glad to, uh, answer any questions that you may have regarding these agreements.
Board members, any questions for David? Thank you. Hearing none, then, um, that motion would be in order.
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize interim town manager to, um, authorize the 2021 annual beach condition survey contract and the 2021 annual, annual mo- monitoring contract, one with McKimmon Creed in the amount of $63,100, and the other in the amount of $57,119 for task 9.1 to Moffett and Nickel.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you.
And I'll take this next one as well. Uh, this is year two of the multi-decadal master plan, uh, which covers the borrow area investigation. Uh, one thing that I just wanted to mention up front, uh, year one is in the process of wrapping up, and we will be bringing that report forward to the board at their July meeting. So, whereas year one efforts, uh, really cover the, the current level of protection, as well as storm analysis for varying levels of, of, um, of protection for future projects, nourishment triggers, um, as well as estimation of long-term sad needs. And, um, over a 50-year horizon, um, the year-two efforts will focus on the borrow area investigation. And so, the, uh, these investigations will consist of, uh, field, field data that will be acquired with geotechnical field investigations, um, to look at the compatibility of sand across the borrow area, as well as trying to map out the seabed floor, look at the sand distribution, and see if there's any anomalies, um, or things that, uh, exist below the surface, uh, that they may have to go ahead and avoid, um, you know, for future projects. And so, the, what we are, uh, asking for, uh, with this is to proceed forward with a portion of that field investigation, um, which would look at the field work portion and the mapping of the seafloor, um, as well as any anomalies that exist. Uh, and the, the cost of this work is $192,295.70. Um, this is Phase 1A portion. Uh, we would be coming back to the board in July with the second part of that, which would include additional geotechnical investigation, uh, as well as engineering analysis, to go ahead and round out that borrow area investigation, which is concentrated in borrow area S1. And, uh, for those of you who are not familiar with that, borrow area S1, um, comes from the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers project, the 2000 Derrick County project, that mapped out a borrow area, uh, off, offshore in Nagshead, uh, with an estimated amount of sand of about 100 million cubic yards. Um, what we've done so far with prior projects is we've, um, concentrated about 15 to 20% of that area. This would go ahead and round out and, um, encompass that entire S1 borrow area investigation. And so, the request is to authorize the town manager, uh, to proceed with the execution of the agreement for those, uh, field, uh, the field investigation, uh, with, with that borrow area, that, um, we could go ahead and get that work initiated sooner rather than later. Be glad to ask any questions that you have.
I, I have a question. If, if the entire S1 area was surveyed and found to be suitable in terms of, of sand, um, is that likely? You know, I understand that we would move around, I guess we would move around in that area with each beach nourishment exercise, allow the areas to refill. Is that likely to be a large enough area for the foreseeable future, understanding, you know, thinking about three or four nourishment cycles forward, that we would have adequate sand in that area?
Um, yes. Based upon 100 billion cubic yards that were, um, estimated with that original project, to date, we've used up 8.6 million. So, yes, for the foreseeable future, that there would be adequate sand needs.
Okay.
Um, that would be met.
Thank you. Any questions, Ford? Hearing none, then a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I make a motion that we give the town manager approval to enter into a contract for Phase 1A field work, uh, in the amount of $192,295.70.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying, uh, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, but I think Amy's, uh, raising that question. Yes, Amy.
Amy's prepared a, a new capital project ordinance for the master plan work, and she can, you want to go ahead and speak about that real quick?
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, in anticipation of the contract approval, um, I went ahead and prepared a new capital project ordinance, um, the, the master planning capital project ordinance. That way, it separates it out from, you know, Dorian or Matthew, or it's, it's kind of separate and independent from any beach nourishment, maintenance project that we're, that we're doing. So, we're keeping it separate. So, um, I attached an ord- or we included an ordinance for your adoption to establish the beach nourishment master plan capital project fund, and we have to fund it. So, I've also included a budget amendment to move money from the capital, beach nourishment capital reserve to that new ordinance. And so, we would request your adoption of both of those items.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion to approve that as presented, because that was part of our package.
Yes, sir. It's, um, in your packet.
Yes.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All, um, signify approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Do we need a separate motion for the budget amendment and the...
I think we probably... You, you were incorporating both, I believe.
I tended to incorporate both.
Okay. I just wanted to be thankful.
Right. Because it was part of the package.
As presented, so it was asked, okay. Uh, we, I think we've sufficiently...
Yes, we can incorporate both.
And his intent was there with a clear interpretation.
Thank you. All right. Uh, the next item then on our agenda is, uh, discussion of town-owned property at the Soundside Event Site. Who's doing this? You or Andy or John?
Um, I can cover it briefly. So, it's something that the town has been working on with the Derrick County Tourism Board, and the, the attorneys have been meeting, uh, to go over this agreement. I know the, the board is familiar with the agreement. Uh, we were, we were given a copy of this by Hornthal, Riley, Ellison, Malin, Robert Hobbs, pres- prepared the agreement. Basically, it's for the sale of the town's portion of the Soundside Event Site to the Derrick County Tourism Board. Um, so, over the course of about 10 years, we would be selling our interest in that. Um, the agreement includes an initial payment of $600,000 that we would receive prior to the end of the fiscal year. And then, over the next 10 years, we would receive an annual payment, which would include a minimum payment of $100,000, but could be more, depending on the availability of funds from the tourism board. And then, you know, at the, at the last year, there would be a final payment, uh, with whatever amount has not been yet paid, in the total, total amount of $2.336,107. I believe the Derrick County Tourism Board has approved the agreement on, on their side. I think it goes to the Derrick County Board of Commissioners, which meets next Monday. And so, with that said, the agreement is there for your consideration.
All right, thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
Wonderful.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve as presented. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Yeah, that's also been a long time.
No kidding.
Yeah. Wonderful. Good news. All right, that brings us to the, um, Board of Commissioners' agenda, item M. Item M1 is Commissioner Fuller, uh, discussion of beach driving.
And, and Mayor, I have a couple of things that are not on the agenda. I could...
Yes, sir.
Hold those to the end or do them whenever you say please, but...
Uh, the floor is yours, so, as you wish.
The, the first thing is a request that, at least, I personally observed, uh, some user conflicts this year, both at the beginning of beach driving season and at the end of beach driving season. It's not uncommon that you see conflicts of use, whether it be a surfer and a swimmer, or a surfer and a fisherman, or with a fisherman and, uh, somebody else. But, but what's happening in what I'm seeing... But, but what's happening in, what I'm seeing is, and I, I surely don't want to bring this up, but it's one of the things that I think needs to be addressed, is the user conflict between beach driving and our extended season for people using the beach, laying on the beach. And I would like to request that the board request public safety, which means primarily police and ocean, and fire through Ocean Rescue to bring us something back at the July meeting for us to look at in terms of quantitative data and their observations of what they've seen as far as it relates to user conflict between beach driving and, um, people that lay on the beach. The, the, the process may lead to a shortening of beach driving season, or it may lead to nothing depending on what we receive. But that's, my, my first request is that the board ask that that be brought back to us at the July meeting for consideration.
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes.
If you don't mind. Could we have the clerk go back and look at, um, we, I'm sure we're going to get a request very shortly about the Naxxess Surf Fishing Tournament, which we automatically will approve. But if I recall correctly, at some point in the past, as part of that, with the permitting and stuff, that they were to limit their vehicles to three vehicles per team? Can you find that and see if that's still in the minutes? Or is my memory just totally screwed up? Because that would be.
Or both.
Well, well, that could be. But my reason for asking is that, um, if that's the agreement we have, then that would reduce the number of vehicles on the beach during that time, which is a major holiday weekend as well.
Mayor, if I may add just one thing to that, just for the record, I did receive a phone call last night from a town citizen who was unable to be here today because of jury duty. But he too, uh, talked about the conflicts that he had seen this past spring and last fall on the beaches in Naggs Head, between people laying out and beach driving. His observations were people not airing down, just rutting up the beach so hard that it's, or so bad that it's hard for people to, to actually walk out on the beach, vehicles traveling in excess of the speed limit. And he had some suggestions, but I'll, I'll hold those until we hear something about it from public safety.
Okay, all right, pretty good. In that case, um, a, a motion would be in order to make this request to staff, that being public safety, and to the clerk for the information that was requested.
I'd make that motion. I don't know if it's a heated motion, but I'd make the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Fuller, you have some other items?
The, the next thing, this, this trails that a little bit, but I would request that this board, um, continue to commit as a priority the ordinances that we have in place and the direction to staff that relate to those ordinances, about issues on the beach, in our parking lots, and along the multi-use path. That we make sure that both police and Ocean Rescue through fire are consciously aware, and it's a priority issue of ours to enforce the ordinances that we have on the books.
Thank you. I would, I would hope they would be.
Okay. Well, I, I would hope that they would be too, but I, I don't know if this board is committed to that or not. I, I know I am.
It's getting to be tent season, and the one thing that's occurring are tents popping up. And if everybody remembers, our ordinance states that tents cannot be joined together, that there has to be a separation so that people crossing over can get to the beach. And that's something that everybody needs to be made aware of that, to be enforced. Not to block the beach.
And, uh, another thing, um, not to mention Amazon by name, but they're selling these new beach tents that exceed our allowance, and they're selling like hotcakes.
All right.
Andy, has, have you started picking up tents yet?
Yeah, we're doing the tagging and removal like we always do.
I, I would say, from my observation, Public Works last year and this year so far are doing a great job. You know, I mean, they're the ones that are doing what needs to be done, but if you, the issues usually come after Public Works are off the beach. And when we should have at least, I, I, I know Ocean Rescue is not an ordinance organization, but they are an educational organization. And I would hope that even if they have some sort of written literature to hand people, one thing, but police does, is supposed to be out on the beach. And they are supposed to, I want, obviously, you want people down here to have a good time and everything. But when you see those same ordinance violations for about nine or ten days in a row, you know, sooner or later, you've got to have a comment that, are y'all really truly doing what you're supposed to be doing? And when I say same ordinance violation, I'm not talking about different people. I'm talking about this, the same people having the ordinance violations.
Okay.
And then.
Do these folks know you? Is that why they're doing it?
Probably. And then, the, uh, last thing is, and, and I'd be more than happy to help, but, on this, but we, we still have some vegetated debris on the side of the road in a number of areas. And, you know, it's just one of those things that I know code enforcement has been out and issued citations. It's negative, but it has to be done. Now, I mean, if it's June and we, you know. But I, I would hope that we could have a more formalized process than what we have had. And, you know, history takes it back to when we used to have it at May first. We always knew we were going to be out there May thirty-first, still picking up debris. And I, I'd just like to work with Public Works Code Enforcement, everybody to kind of more formalize what needs to be done. You know, some other towns have it like, okay, these are your two-week window, guys. And that's it. And it gets done. We tend to be really friendly and allow people to put debris out after the fact. And then, it sits there for a long time, and it, nobody likes to look at it. And, and of course, one of my values is the way the town looks. And I'm probably the one that sees it more than anybody, just because I'm looking for it. Tired and retired. But, but it, it's just one of those things. I, I want our town to look good. And, and Public Works has done a really good job, but at some point, you know, they just can't keep going out.
Yeah, I, that, that is an issue. And I, you know, in a, in a related vein, I, I had communicated with, uh, with, uh, interim town manager Garmin about, in particular, um, I was thinking about South Naggs Head, where I had driven up, you know, after pickup was complete. And, um, about perhaps some additional communication on our part to let those owners know, um, that, that there is a limit. You know, if we're, if we're going to enforce a limit, you know, I think we're also obligated to kind of bend over backwards information-wise to let folks know that there is that, that limit. And I understand that there are some other issues down in, in that area and, and around town of, of possibly dumping. And so, so staff is looking at that and trying to get a handle on that.
And the thing is, South Naggs Head goes, you know, it's hard to issue a citation because all of them are coming from these long private streets out to the road. So, you don't even know who to issue the citation to.
That's right.
So, it's a matter of, we, we just have to pick it up.
That's right. Okay.
I think, I think we need to start thinking about our program for next year and evaluating it and having staff bring back suggested changes so we can start getting ahead of the curve instead of waiting until next season.
And like I said, I'd be willing to help any way I could on that because it is a passion.
Yeah, thank you. Glad to see the new Public Works Director shaking his head back there too.
Oh, they, they would welcome this opportunity.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Fuller?
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kahoon?
Thank you. One is for requests for a closed session to discuss legal matters and preserve the attorney-client privilege. And the other one I have is that I've had requests from citizens about bike racks at our beach accesses, which we don't have at all of our beach accesses. And if we're encouraging use of the bike path and so forth, we need to have places where people can safely lock up their bicycles at the beach accesses. I would ask that we look at putting beach, make sure that all of our beach accesses have a bike rack.
Yes, right, right.
I mean, we have them in some of the northern parts of town, but down on my end, there's not a whole lot of bike racks.
Okay, yes.
May I add to that?
Yes.
Most of the bike racks are pushed up against the dune. Yeah, and they do have a sign that says, no parking, bicycles only. But if you, but a lot of times, they become encumbered by cars anyway. If the bicycle rack could be pulled out, then bicyclists can use both sides of the bicycle rack, and it would also prevent cars from pulling into those areas.
Good.
I mean, we would need to make it as friendly and stop the theft as much as possible. And make people feel secure about riding their bikes to the beach accesses.
We, we've had some discussions about sort of standardizing what's at the beach accesses and looking at, you know, where signs are placed, how they're placed, how bi, bi, bike racks are placed. You know, in some cases, they're just trying to find an available spot, but probably a little bit more thought could go into it and, um, and just the general layout. So, it's, it's something we're, we're thinking about. And again, I think we'd welcome the opportunity to try to address that, so.
Good.
And as it relates to that beach access issue, Grable Street, which is a fairly busy access, but there's a no parking sign, which is meant to be no parking on the pathway, is being interpreted as no parking into the access. So, maybe the placement of that sign maybe needs to be relocated. Either moved further south or further north so that it's not right at the beach access.
Okay.
And, you know, deterring parking in there.
Okay, good, thank you. We appreciate you all looking out for us cyclists. That's a, that's a good sign.
Trying, Mayor.
I appreciate that, I do.
Mr. Mayor, can we get an update on the sign placement on Deering and Soundside Road, Thirteenth Street? And the stop sign and all that?
Yes, um, chief and, 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 well, anybody may want to address this, but this is the, um, placement of signs down Soundside Road related to that. So, I don't know who wants to speak to that.
Maybe Eric can come up and talk about that.
Mayor and board, uh, so we, we were given the directive. We, we were trying to complete as much of that process as what we could before the Memorial Day weekend. So, we did go down Soundside Road and then across, over to Deering. We placed one sign then to the, uh, to the south of Deering. So, we had those placed per the sign ordinance or the, the sign policy every two hundred feet. Went out there personally and, and marked each one of those locations. So, we had all the, we had all of that installed on the Friday before Memorial Day. We also placed the, the two additional stop signs and stop bars there at the entrance to the park. In addition, worked with, uh, worked with police department as far as putting the dynamic message sign out there that then reiterated, I don't know if you, you at all had, had the opportunity to see that, really, really hit home the message that we're trying to get across, that there is no parking and violators will be ticketed and towed. So, um, we've successfully installed that from the highway around to Deering. So, the, the other two pieces that we still have yet to, to install are on Thirteenth Street itself and then up Deering. So, uh, we'll be looking at that in the next couple of weeks.
Did you remove the old signs? Or did some of the old signs still in between your two hundred foot?
Yeah, we, so we tried to re, we tried to utilize as, as many of the existing signs as what we could. There were a couple that we moved. So, one of the practices where I came from was to always put those signs to straddle property lines. That way, you don't have a monument out in front of somebody's home. So, we did make the effort to, to move a few of those. But for the most part, the, the ordinance or the sign policy talks about the maximum two hundred-foot spacing. If it was greater than two hundred, then we may, we may shift a sign. Fortunately, we're, we were able to utilize most of the existing signs that were out there.
Did you get, um, a standard height on all of them? Elevation height off the ground? And the only reason I ask that question is, um, when I drove down the street, I noticed some were higher than others. But I did have a complaint from a citizen that said, when you pull out to look both ways, you stare right into a sign. So, I didn't know if, he says one's really high, and that's when he drops his vehicle out, that's the one he sees where some of the others are at this elevation.
And some of it had to do with just the grade on which the posts were placed. Some of them, so, you, you increase the grade as you go up the side slopes on the hills. We can go through there and, and verify on, on sign height. You know, again, they, a lot of those are hand dug, so, um, we were, yeah.
We're not in Iowa.
Not, yeah. Yeah, in, in, in Missouri, we had to, we had to auger most of those just because of all the rock. Absolutely.
Mayor, can I just add that? Mayor, for a ten minute, you talked about our sign policy. I hope that with your background, that as you proceed on in your, 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 uh, time here, that you would offer any recommendations or suggestions to our sign policy.
Absolutely.
That you see, because I think.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, as, as I get myself more acclimated to the community as far as sign policy or just any kind of traffic practices, definitely work with both chiefs and, and figure out, you know, what those best, best practices should be, and then, uh, make sure we document those things. Absolutely, thank you.
One thing for the police chief, if I could, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, has, since you've been to the area since it's been marked?
Yes, sir.
Do you, is it adequately marked?
I believe so, I believe so.
So, the officers are going to be able to enforce that the way it needs to be enforced?
Yes, sir, they've done a real good job of, like you said, sort of spreading some of the signs out, getting rid of some of the, uh, the sign pollution, but at the same time, making everything enforceable. I mean, there's no, no mistake, you should not park in the right way on West Soundside Road.
And thank you to Public Works for doing that, and thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Good. There may be an opportunity to look at the spacing. I mean, you see a lot of signs out there now. I mean, I don't know what the board's thoughts on it are, but it seems like we want to be able to enforce the ordinances, but, but sometimes less is more, and something we might want to look at moving forward.
If, if I can remember correctly, the distance between signs for no parking were based off a recommendation from staff about what is an appropriate distance to be enforceable. So, if we want to look back, maybe we can revisit that and ask again of public safety, what's an appropriate distance? Because it, it came basically from staff to the board, and that distance was set by the board based on a staff recommendation.
Eric, is there a recommendation from the, based on the MUTCD on sign placement?
No, not as, not as far as spacing. There's a lot of different factors that are taken into consideration, size of the sign, you know, those types of things. Every, every individual circumstance is going to be a little bit different. Some of the things, though, that I think we could look at, and, uh, you know, when we order those signs to either get a left or right arrow or a double arrow, that helps better define the area that we're talking about enforcement. So, there's some, there's some additions that I think we can do there, just as we, as we look at the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Commissioners, any other issues? All right, very good. That brings us to the mayor's agenda. The, the one thing I want to do, this is primarily for the public's benefit, is as everyone is aware, our previous hire for, um, uh, town manager did not end up coming here and taking the job. Our search firm developmental associates, one of the things that, that was a consideration in our hiring of them was that they had a guarantee, essentially. Not, it wouldn't, wasn't, to, to their accounting, it's never quite been triggered by an event like this one that, that we encountered. But they are obligated to, uh, undertake the search again. The town is responsible for some number of, of expenses for. The town is responsible for some number of, of expenses for advertising and travel for candidates, and that kind of thing will, will be the same. But as far as their fee, they are required to repeat all of that work that they did before and, and had no additional charge to the town. And I just wanted to say that so the public understood that. That brings us to, well, let, let me go ahead and ask before we break for lunch, other business to come before the Board. If anyone is aware of anything else, we have a time-specific item at 1:30. Other than that, we have, other than that item and our closed session, we have cleared the agenda. And so we will take a lunch break and then return at 1:30, if, if there's nothing else to come before the Board.
Can we return a little bit early so we'll be prepared for Becky to start at 1:30?
Yes, ma'am. I would, I would, I would say that. And if everyone could be in place at 1:20, Chief, for being here in place at about 1:20, then the Board will be in recess until 1:20 PM. So the Board has returned to order from our lunch break, and we have a time-specific item, the pay and classification study from the MAPS Group. And Becky is with us, so Andy, any, any introduction or?
I, I think, just talking with Becky last night, she's got materials prepared for the Board to take with you. So I think her goal today is just to go over everything with you and maybe answer some initial questions, but give you a chance to review everything. And then we can determine an opportunity to get back together in some format and go, go over any questions or comments or discussion. So I think that's, that's essentially it.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
And good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board. I've met many of you, some of you I have not. So just to give you a quick background, I have been doing this for 33 years as a consultant. Worked with over 200 local governments in North Carolina. In nine COVID years, I drove between 20 and 30,000 miles a year around the state. With yours typically doing in-person interviews and orientation sessions with employees if that one. But unfortunately, in this case, we did that so soon. Some information about the process and methodology for study, very informative. Any questions you have, I'm happy to answer as we go along. Once we get to the PowerPoint, I will help out the materials and walk you through what's, what's there. And again, answer any questions you have. Leave it with you, and then, once you've had a chance to get through it, I'm happy to come back and answer additional, additional questions. So you can see there. Here are some of our services. The first two are what we are doing with y'all, and those are our most frequent. Probably 65% of our work is doing classification-based studies and personnel policy updates. We also do council, we're retreats, have done two here over the years. We have done live engagement supervisor training with the School of Government. Team building, help design, implement, performance evaluation, performance case systems, help with hiring processes, analyze, our newest services, we do a full satisfaction or engagement survey and feed those back so organizations can identify issues and address them. And as I mentioned, those are just some of the 200-plus organizations we've worked with as well as some of the nonprofits. So I want to start by talking about why does the town need to have a classification-based program? Are they similar, or do they have the same title? Are they different? And if they're different, ranking those jobs in terms of which require more education, more experience, more knowledge, more skill, more responsibility, which require less? What's an appropriate title for the job? In studies like this, sometimes we recommend a different title. Sometimes because titles get outdated. Sometimes the duties have changed to the point where the title's no longer accurate. And sometimes they just say better titles. And then finally, on the classification side in general, capturing the essence of each job is something we call a class specification, what people often refer to as a job description. So that's the classification factor. The pay side of the coin is this, given a set of duties, what's an appropriate salary range for that job from start to max? Those are what other places in the market are paying for the same kind of work. So when we look, when, when we look at why does the town need to have this plan and have it up to date, you see five principles there. And that first one, I'm going to break out on the two different sides of the coin. So recruit on the classification side is looking at when there's a vacant position. That classification of job description is a very important engagement tool. It should have on it, up to date, education, experience, knowledge, skills, abilities, and certifications that help the Mayor's doing the hiring process, think about what needs to go in their job app? What kind of interview questions should we ask? So we get a good match between the job that needs to be done, the person being hired to do that job. Research shows there can be as much as 40% difference in productivity based on the quality of our decision. Okay, so some of the things that are most frequently misunderstood about classification. These are not factors that go into determining which jobs are at the same classification level, which are at different classification levels. Now, this is on the classification side. When we get to the pay side of the coin, some of these will come back into play, and I'll talk about that too. But the first one is volume of work, and let me just give you an example. Let's say hypothetically, the town has three water meter readers. And let's say hypothetically, one of them averages 400 meters a day, one averages reading 500 meters a day, and one averages reading 600 meters a day. Different volumes of work. Now, when we class, look at classifying those three positions, what we're looking at is are the duties the same or are the duties different? Now, if all three of those meter readers have the duty of reading residential water meters, then the duty's the same, the classification's the same, the salary range is the same. Now, the difference between 400 meters a day and 600 meters a day might be the one reading 600 is more productive, doing a better job. That would be performance value question, and if you chose performance value. The difference might be the one reading 400 meters a day is just living in a bar town where the houses are spaced out further, just takes longer, not a classification factor. On the other hand, if one of those meter readers is reading residential water meters, the second one is reading, preparing, replacing, testing meters, the third one is reading, preparing, replacing, testing meters and operates the back code when there's a water line break, then you've got three different sets of duties and three different classifications. And length of service, obviously, is the person. Classification's looking at the job, not the person. So again, if you've got three firefighters, one's in there six nights, so it's been there five years, one's been there 15 years. Again, the duty's the same, the classification's the same, the salary pension's the same. Now, hopefully, when we get to the pay side of the coin, you would see them at three different places within that salary. Employee qualifications, this one gets interesting. Because in classification, what we're looking at is not what are the qualifications the person has, but rather what are the qualifications the job requires. Probably one of the best examples of this goes back to when I was working for the town of Chapel Hill many years ago. We were doing a study of our bus drivers, had 15 bus drivers in the town. And believe it or not, two of them were attorneys. They finished law school at Carolina, they passed the bar, hadn't done the job as a lawyer yet, so they were still driving buses. As I put it, they were too nervous. So the thing is, you should have a bus driver with a law degree differently than the other bus drivers. Sometimes.
Less or more?
Sometimes, if you're trying to argue with me about that. And then finally, employee work performance is not part of classification. Again, that's the person we're looking at, the job, not the person. I was doing a study sometime back for a really small town. So it was a town with only like nine employees, no managers. So you had like three employees reported to the police commissioner, and three reported to the fellow police commissioner, and three reported to the finance commissioner, and I passed. and three reported to the finance commissioner, and I passed out something which I was going to tell... Well, what's the problem? He said, "Well, he's doing a lousy job, we're getting ready to fire him." And I said, "Well, you know, if you've told him what he needs to do to improve, and you've given him a chance to improve, and you've given him training, and you've been through your disciplinary processes, and he's not doing the job, you do need to deal with that person appropriately. But you still want to classify the job accurately. Put it in a competitive salary range. So if you fire somebody who's doing a bad job, you'll have a competitive salary that will allow you to hire somebody who can do a good job." Sometimes organizations get people that are less than competent because they aren't paying to get the competency. So, questions, comments on anything so far? Okay, so these are the factors we do use in determining which jobs are at the same classification level, which jobs are at different classification level. That first one is mental difficulty. How hard are the problems that have to be solved? Complexity, how many steps does somebody have to go through to get a task done? Can they get it done in three steps? Does it take them 33 steps to get through something? Variety of work, how many different kinds of things do they have to know about or be able to do? Is it just read meters? Is it read meters and finish concrete? Is it read meters, finish concrete, and operate a SCADA system? How many different kinds of things? Public contact, who's this person come in contact with to get the job done? Is this somebody who's just working with coworkers? Or are they dealing with the public? And if they are, what are they doing? Are they taking in information? Are they giving out information on behalf of the town? Are they solving problems or complaints? Are they enforcing laws or codes? Are they negotiating contracts on behalf of the town? Education and experience, and again, that's what does the job require, not what does the person have. Work environment and hazards, is this a job where somebody has to go out at 2:00 in the morning, and it's 10 degrees outside? Deal with dangerous people, dangerous situations. Physical effort, we look at the frequency, intensity, and duration of the physical effort required. And then, does the job have supervisory responsibility? And if so, at what level of authority? And then supervision received, is this a job where the employee and supervisor work together most of the day, with the supervisor giving guidance? Or does the employee work independently from the supervisor? Have to make his or her own decisions, catch and correct his or her own mistakes? So I want to turn back to the pay side of the coin now and walk you through briefly the four primary components in a compensation system and how what we're doing here fits into that overall context. So the four components of a compensation system is... It's like the four legs of a table. When one is missing, then it makes the table wobbly. It means that there's more stress on the other three. Or if one's out of whack, it pulls everything else out of whack. And you can almost think about the classification and pay plan as the infrastructure of the HR system. When it's not accurate and up to date, then everything else is gonna be having some problems. So that first one up there is the major focus of the study. Updating classifications, updating salary ranges. And when we find jobs that are either below market or underclassified, we do recommend salary adjustments to bring them up to where they should be. And instead of raises, these really are catch-ups, catching people up to where they should be already. The second of the four parts of the compensation system, most people call this a cost of living adjustment. Compensation professionals call it a market adjustment because what you're doing is you're moving pay up over time, keeping pace with market changes. Typically, looking at the national rate of inflation or CPI, but also the local economy, because the local economy could be stronger or weaker than the national economy. And you have to really take into account both national and local. And what this is doing is it's moving your ranges up in between studies, moving the hiring rate and the max, trying to keep pace with the market. Hopefully, you're doing two things. One, keeping those hiring rates competitive. Because if you did not do this, and your competitors do, then what would happen is over time, they would be raising their starting salaries. If yours were not being raised, you'd get to the point you can only hire people nobody else wants, which obviously is not where you want to be. And then the other part is helping keep down turnover. Turnover is very costly. According to the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, when the town loses an employee, the cost is anywhere between 2/3 of that employee's annual salary and 125% of that employee's annual salary. And you have a number of jobs that are in that 100% to 125% range, including certified water, certified building inspectors, law enforcement, and fire, or just some, to name a few. The third of those four parts is, once you have salary ranges established, there needs to be some method of moving employees across that range. Now, there is no one right way to do this. The important thing is, do you have a method? The trend has been to base that on performance. But every organization gets to choose its own philosophy to make sure that your people aren't just stuck at the beginning of the range, that there is movement across that range. And the final one is longevity pay. And longevity says, "Thank you for sticking with us, we appreciate your loyalty." Usually awarded in lump sum amounts. And, you know, the trend used to be that everybody did that on a percentage basis. Now, it's been sort of moved more toward flat dollar amounts so that there can be more money put into that range movement to address compression. So any questions on that so far? Okay, so what I want to do really briefly is illustrate how all of this is intended to work together. So, the pay plan itself, what we have written into to you and what you typically see are grades that go down the page like this, and then a range. We recommended a hiring rate, a minimum, a midpoint, and a max. And the difference between hiring and minimum is if somebody comes in at the hiring rate, once they complete probation, they go to minimum. And we've recommended a six-month period of time there. What we have found is that there's... Studies show there's actually a real psychological advantage to being able to tell when you hire, you're eligible for raising six months. That's a real recruitment tool. And the hiring rate is tied to the minimum requirement to earn that classified classification. So, the way this is intended to work is that the grades going down the page are intended to represent the job. So again, I'm just gonna use the police department because I think their rank structure made it so easy to follow. So we'll say hypothetically, grade 11 is a police officer, grade 13 is a sergeant, grade 15, lieutenant. And I'm just gonna put some round numbers up there, don't leave anything into this. So we'll say hypothetically, this goes from 40,000 to 60,000. We'll say this goes from 45,000 to 70,000. So when we say the grade represents the job, what that means is that grade 11 is the grade for police officers. All police officers are somewhere in that grade. Grade 13 is the grade for sergeant. All sergeants are somewhere in that grade. If I'm a police officer, and I get to the top of my grade, I can't just go down to the next grade. That represents the maximum value in the market for that job. That's what keeps the town from overpaying, having that 5,200,000 in Australia Assistant 10,900 years ago. So the only way my grade changes is if my job changes. So if I'm a police officer and get promoted to sergeant, I go to grade for sergeant. If I'm a sergeant and miss out, and get promoted to police officer, I go back to grade for police officer. A study like this could say that really, based on the market, police officers should be in grade 12, sergeants should be in grade 14. If you approve that, then all of them do. The grade and job stay together. The range then, going this way, is where the person comes in. So you've got job this way, person this way. So let's say hypothetically, the chief is hiring two new police officers today. And let's say hypothetically, one of them is coming straight out of those big law enforcement with no previous experience. The other one is a police officer for two years. So the way this is intended to work is that you would start the one with no previous experience here. The one with previous experience, someone else. Then, once they're onboard, going back to the... What's... Four components. That third one, the range movement. Once they're onboard, there needs to be some method of moving them across the range. Every organization, again, gets to choose its method. It can be seniority, it can be performance. But what you hope to see over time, and I'll just give an example of if it were performance, what you would see is that over time, you would have long-term, high-performance employees. They're going on time doing a really good job in the top parts of the pay plan. You'd have middle-term, high performers, and long-term, middle performers in the middle parts of the pay plan. And you'd have brand-new folks, and sometimes you're going to find out to keep your job at not a whole lot more, and you'd be a big part of the pay range. That range movement is very important. What y'all have asked us to do primarily is this, part right here. What is the proper classification and what is the proper grade? Once we do that, and we create this whole new pay table, then we've got to get employees onto that new pay table. And we give you implementation strategies to do that. And so every employee has got to be placed somewhere on there. And with each of the implementation strategies we give you, we do something we call a distribution analysis, which is taking all the employees and all the jobs and all the grades, collapsing them together, and do bar charts. How many employees are at the very beginning of the range? Or, how many are 5% in bar? How many are 10% in bar? And so on. And if you draw a line across the top of those bars, what you hope to see is something that looks sort of like a bell shaped curve. The ideal distribution of employees across the ranges in a long-term, stable organization is to have approximately 2/3 of our employees in the middle, 1/3 of the pay table. Unfortunately, sometimes, when we do this, instead of that bell shaped curve, we see something that looks like a ski slope. And that is what's called compression. And what that means is that most employees are in the very beginning part of their pay. And if you have compression, there are two associated issues. One is a hiring problem. Because let's say you've got a really well-qualified candidate you want to hire. To get one, you need to pay them here, but the onboard equally qualified folks are back here. Second problem with compression can be a morale issue. Because instead of having brand-new folks here and long-term folks over here, they're very close together. And that can create dissatisfaction that leads to that expensive turnover that we talked about earlier. And I may say... You have a question? Others? Can you just have a pass on down? Okay, so what I'm gonna do is just kind of walk through this with you, answer any questions you have as we go along. And then, as I said, leave it with you. Come back once you've had a chance to go through it, and if you have additional questions. So the first thing is a cover letter, and then a title page, and then a table of contents. And behind the table of contents are five pages of org charts. The org charts represent, as we understand it, current organizational structure and recommended job titles. So that has all the recommended job titles on it. And then the last thing before you get to the first blue tab is just a page on methodology, which we have already talked about. So if you go behind that first blue tab, there are, let's see here, pages that go from page 3 to page 15 that basically, by department, give you a thumbnail sketch of each different job. What are the duties? Did we recommend a different title? How did we see this in the market? You know, is it stronger or weaker than other jobs in the market? Or is it right, you know, is it pretty consistent with the market? So those take you through page 15. So tell me if you have questions, or if I'm going too fast or too slow. So turn with me to page 17. Still behind that first blue tab. What you see at the top there are the places that we survey, and the percentages that you see there, like 50%, 55%, and so on. What that is representing is how wide the range is. So for example, if you have a range that goes from 40,000 to 60,000, 59, 40 is 20, 20 is half of 40, that's a 50% range. So when we put jobs onto the pay plan, we're putting them at a competitive starting zone. That analysis then tells us how far above that we need to put them at. And what you see in that analysis is that the average is 57. But that's, there's just a couple of 70s that are kind of pulling that a little bit higher than necessary. Your current range is 50%. We're recommending a 55% range. So the difference between start and max for all of your jobs would be 55%. Sure? So the only thing that would do is if the range starts at 40, and we're going 55%, the only thing going above 50% with 55% would do would be raise the top. You just raise your top above where you want. Now, what we also, what we did talk about was moving the whole pay plan itself. So, well, instead of just raising the top, we raised from what you received as a first draft, we raised everything by 2%. So that means instead of the starting zone being 40, we changed it to 41, 200.
That doesn't affect the range percent?
That does not affect the range.
So you keep the range percent the same, but then you just manipulate, moving everything?
We made your plan more competitive.
That's what we wanted to do, was make it more competitive. If you were to start out below, you're gonna have to start out above.
And that's the way we did it, with the range.
Can I ask you?
That's what we've always given ourselves. That's what we... Because that was important, actually, moving the level, moving the... And the way to do that is...
Can I ask a real quick question, just to clarify something? So, based on the meeting we had, we talked about raising the ranges 3%. And so if the board adopts a 2.6% COLA, starting July 1, that would change this again, is that correct?
That's correct. So every time you do a range adjustment, you know, this, the whole table changes. If you do 2%, this changes by 2%. This changes by 2%. Everything on the whole table changes, by whatever that percentage is.
So this is today?
That's today.
And July 1, this changes?
And it needs to because, and that's actually noted on the next page... And it needs to because, and, um, let's actually note on the next page, is, um, you know, your salary data was collected in March. July 1st, all these same places, the collective data from, are probably going to move it going. Um, we don't know exactly by how much, but they will say you will need to do that as well. Any other questions at this point? So then, at, starting at the bottom of page 17, you can see the three options that we calculated. Um, and what these options do is they take, again, you don't want to just move everybody to minimum because that makes your compression worse. It takes each employee who has completed probation and places them at minimum plus 1.5% per year. Now, there are two different ways to look at per year. You can look at per year with the town as a target. Or you can look at, uh, 1.5% per year and their current job. And to give you an example, um, let's say you've got a police sergeant. He's going to be 15 years, 10 years as a police officer, 5 as a sergeant. Now, it probably doesn't make sense to give him 15 years of credit as a sergeant. Maybe, you know, 15 times 1.5 would be 22.5% into the range of a sergeant. But you don't want to just give him 5 years of credit in that range as a sergeant. Because that would put 7.5% into that range. So option one, we've given you the options to do that. Option one is based on length of service. Option two is based on time in the actual job. Option three is the one we recommended to you. But it's what that does is it gives half credit for each. So it says we're going to give them 7.5 years credit, um, you know, for having been with the town, and then another 2.5 on that sergeant, which is going to put in 10%. And if I've done the math correctly, but you're moving him into the range. Makes, not just on, uh, his time as a sergeant, but giving him half credit also for how we've moved it. It's, it's a, for a blended option. And it's probably the most accurate and fair. Let me see if I described it, uh, clearly. Do you hear what I said? About those three different options?
Well, I have a question on that last one. So a sergeant with 15 years of experience, experience with the town in the period, 10 years of which was a patrol officer, and 5 years of which was a sergeant. Would your post would be 1.5, um, half credit for his, his, his. So somebody who started 15 years ago, said 2 years as a patrol officer, and then 13 years as a sergeant, would get the same, same credit?
It would get 2 years, you'd get half of the 2 plus half of the 13.
Yeah, 1.5. Now, I could look up the, the.
Um, for the.
Did you change the material in here?
Uh, yes. So I did adjust those ranges that you listed by 40% based on the direction I got from the meeting. Um, and the only, I think we only adjusted one job range as an organization that needed. They were saying, uh.
Becky didn't number it. And I might actually do it, but he had killed off a little higher police officer. Instead, one of the work on his talent.
Uh-huh.
In the 45, 7. And we were starting above that 45, 7. And she, it was built 43, 3, so it was a.
So I have made a mistake. And that's not supposed to be what's there. So which page are you looking on?
But the way that we had moved everything after we left the unit, we were going to be over 46 for that. Do you recommend raise that?
Yeah, that is not correct. Oh, wait a minute, no, recommended is 46.
Is at the bottom, it's not showing where it is. But we're reading.
It's, yeah, the recommended is 46. I thought I really messed up. Thank you.
The 42 is the current?
Current is 42, that's right.
And the recommended is 42?
Yeah. So now.
But, so what she's recommending is at the bottom of the page? Not what is decided off the top?
What's the difference between the hiring rate and the minimum?
So the hiring rate, um, is where somebody, you know, like a police officer would be able to, but not experienced, would come in at the hiring rate. At six months, if they're doing satisfactory performance, then they can move to minimum.
And that's 5% difference?
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that we, we haven't had before. I'll try to discuss it, but hiring rate is what, like on page 21, there's the hiring rate for a police officer, which is 46% of the team. And then if we do a six-month probation every period, then after that, we'd get a 5% phase, which would bring that up to minimum, which is 5% for the.
And that, that becomes a really good psychological tool when you're recruiting. If they ever say that in six months, you're eligible for the pay.
And, and you're talking six months, not a year?
Well, yes, I'm talking six months. We did recommend in the personnel policy, that police staff and department has 12-month probation, but are eligible to be considered for that rate like if it's not with, with the.
Just a weird question. But are you eligible for retirement, so it's within the first six months of the four?
Yes. And now, the town may or may not be enrolling people. But the, the, the town administration will allow you to enroll people.
And you know, and you're.
Yeah.
And we've already said, yeah, in the probation.
And a lot of, a lot of your competitors also have that. Um, I know for sure KDH, at least.
KDH's not in, that's a big morale list here, or a morale ticket, but. When KDH continues to, to drop that.
But I, I, the last time I've worked with them was down here, they, they had a minimum. Okay, so let me just go back real quickly to page 18 and touch base on a couple of things there. You can see the cost there for all three options. And again, option three is the one, um, that I'm recommending. Um, the important notes at the bottom there on page 18. Um, the first one we already talked about, which is that the salary data was collected in March. Effective July 1st, these same people are going to adjust their range, and you will need to do that as well. Number two is that what you're seeing is salary dollars only. There are benefits, costs also, and, um, and these costs obviously change with turnover. This is a snapshot in time. And then number three, we recommend the manager have flexibility to, first of all, um, if you've got, there's an employee who's not performing, is in the disciplinary process, um, and is scheduled to get a catch-up, then you may want to, um, delay that until that person is performing and earning their current paycheck. And then the second one is because the only thing we have are hire dates or dates of entry into current job. We don't know, for example, if you have a police officer who had five years of service before they came to the town. And so these implementation strategies could create a little bit of inequity. And the manager may need to tweak it a little bit to reflect what we don't know, um, for internal equity reasons. And then the fourth one, um, is that we talked about, um, classification adjustments. Our catch-ups, they do not take the place of the COLA or promotional increases or range movement or career development. This, this is just a one-time, get you on to a new pay plan that is competitive. So any questions on those? On page?
Can I ask one?
Sure.
Um, Amy might need to weigh on what your assumption is from our meeting we had with committee. So we talked about this 2.6% COLA. And then we talked about a 3% range movement. So the 3% range movement, are we calculating that, that everybody gets a 3%?
Now, this is not, this is not across the board. It's just moving those ranges. And then depends on how long somebody's been here as to where they fall in that. It's not a flat 3. In fact, the cost is more than 3%. If, if you saw there on page 18, the cost for that 3% adjustment was 4.1% in option three.
One quick question, go back to 31. Um, you have the NAGS Ed and the recommended. But under Doug, you have Doug and the recommended. I just assumed that means you're doing their study or somebody's doing their.
Yes, I did their presentation two weeks ago.
Okay.
And so since it's now a public document there, I went ahead and put it in so you could see what we're recommending there.
Correct, thank you.
Um, page 19, you can see those bar charts I was talking about. And what you see there is that you do have compression. Um, option, um, three is better than option, um, one when it comes to looking at that compression. But, um, it, you, you still want to make sure. That you are finding a way to move people across this range. And one of the pitfalls sometimes organizations get into is they put so much money in career development, they can't fund it today's days. So you want to make sure you're looking at, if funding this movement enough to address compression, separate from career development. Because career development hits different departments at different levels. Okay, page 20 is the actual pay chart. You can see, it's got the hiring rates, the minimums, midpoints and max. And then what you actually adopt would be pages, um, 20, 21 through 24. Those are the pages that is, is quote, the pay plan that you actually adopt. And then, of course, behind, uh, starting at page 25, you can see the actual salary data. Um, and when we look at the salary data for entry-level jobs, you know, water plant operator, sanitation equipment operator and so on, we're pretty much trying to hit, um, the market. You know, and we're looking at an average, and in your case, going 3% above that average. Um, with management and supervisory jobs, we're not so much looking at the market as we are looking at where does this job fall uh, in this, in terms of this level of difficult or level of the scope of what's being managed? I mean, obviously, um, the fire chief, for example, here, isn't going to have the same numbers of people, uh, numbers of stations, numbers of apparatus, size of budget as, for example, Chesapeake. So we would not put it equal to Chesapeake. At the same time, um, you know, it's larger than Maniott. So we want to go above Maniott. So we, we do that kind of interpolation when it comes to supervisory and management jobs versus just a straight average. Questions on that?
One, one is a common thing is, um, in the recommended thing, um, just using police versus fire, um, you, it's also for firefighter. Historically, there's always been a conflict if one of those organizations has a higher classification than the other. How come for you would have a different classification?
The classic in North Carolina is that engineer and police officer have been considered equivalent. Um, there's been, in some places, political consideration to put them, put firefighter and police officer equivalent. When you look at the, at the classification factors that we talked about earlier, difficulty, complexity, independence of action, police officers should be higher because they're, they're operating with much more independence. They're having to make more split-second decisions, uh, without a captain, you know, or a, um, incident commander around. Um, they are, um, and those are more individual kinds of decisions being made than a firefighter that's typically, there's a captain there. Um, so when you look at the, um, at the actual classification factors, police officer probably should be higher. I know in some cases politically, they've been placed the same. Classically, fire engineer and, um, police officer were at the same levels. Other questions, comments? Okay, if you go behind the policy tab, um, what you'll see there is there's, um, five pages of management recommendations. Um, I'm not going to take time to go through those at this point. Give you time to read through them. I'm, again, happy to answer questions. We are giving you a new policy. Your policy has a lot of in the weeds in it. I mean, it's a weedy. Much, much more so than a board needs to be involved in. There's a lot of what we call administrative procedures in your policy. So we've given you something that's more at the policy level, the kinds of decisions a board needs to make, and taken the administrative detail out. And, you know, the manager has the authority to implement your policy decisions by putting together procedures that implement those. But we, those don't need to, all those little details don't need to come to y'all for when they need to be updated and changed. Get y'all out of the weeds. Um, the, if you go to page six, um, it's a benefit survey. And again, this is page six after the policy tab. Um, and you'll see, um, we recommended a few things for you to be thinking about. And these may not be things you want to do this year. This might be, you know, two years or three years down the road. But for example, on life insurance, um, we're going to recommend that you look at going a little bit higher on that. Um, you're currently at 30,000. The trend around the state is to do one-time salary. Um, and life insurance is not terribly expensive. Um, the next change we recommended was, um, if you look at 401K, um, there are a lot of places that are doing the 5% parity with police, um, for everybody. Um, your market has some that are and some that are not. Uh, and what a lot of organizations will do is start with just 1% per year, uh, addition, and maybe over several years, um, decide, you know, how far up you want to go. I will also tell you that, um, I do recommend that you not require a match, that you do a straight percentage. And that's because if everybody in the state, under the 401K system, required a match, we wouldn't have a system. Because typically, when you require a match, it's only the higher-paid employees who can afford to do that. Um, and the lower-paid employees typically don't participate. And if the whole system were like that, it wouldn't need IRS requirements. Um, so didn't want to make that, uh, recommendation. And the last thing on page six is standby and callback on the far right there. Um, in large cities, you know, again, if you looked at Chesapeake or Virginia Beach, in their water department, they probably have, you know, 25 to 40 employees. When they're on, uh, on-call rotation, they only have to be on-call once out of every two or three months. Small towns really put a burden on their employees to be in that on-call rotation. Uh, in some cases, I've seen situations where employees are on-call a third of their life. And that means a third of your life where you can't have a, you know, a beer and watch a game or have wine with dinner or whatever. You can't decide, you know, to, you know, I think today I want to go deep sea fishing because you've got to be able to respond. Um, so we do recommend, and you'll see many of your competitors, do provide some kind of compensation. Uh, it's actually paid, straight hour pay for when employees are on, on-call because, just to compensate for the inconvenience for that.
What page are you looking at?
That's page six, at, uh, on the right. So most places are doing, uh, pay, and y'all are currently doing comp time on that. Um, page seven, um, we did not recommend any changes on vacation or call or longevity. But you can also see what your competitors are doing on that. And we did provide a new employment application. And, um, this can be placed on your website. Um, it's form-fillable, um, and downloaded and emailed. Um, it, it's updated with all the EESC regulations, um, and laws. And then past that, the whole rest of the material behind that policy tab is the recommended. And then past that, the whole rest of the material behind that policy tab is the recommended policy. And again, it takes out a lot of that administrative detail. It does add some language for some of the court cases that have occurred that have not been reflected in your policy. And we've tried to use modern practices, principles as well as legal issues in there. And then finally, the last tab is the classifications or job descriptions. They're in alphabetical order. I will tell you, we did not get them all finished. This is not every single one of them. It's probably maybe a little bit more than half. So we've still got some work to do to finish writing these. But if you wanted to see, you know, what a particular job requires, you can go in here and we'll, we hope to have the rest of them in the next week or so. Questions on anything that I've said or haven't said? If not, again, I'm happy to come back once you've had time with this. And I really do appreciate the opportunity to work with the town. You have a very professional staff. They've been very cooperative and it's good to see some old friends as well. So thank you.
What would be the normal process, you know, if you wanted to collect comments? How should we go about doing that and then giving those to you and having you be able to respond to that?
It's really harder to come and respond quickly.
Okay.
I've tried the, you know, why do you respond to it? And it often doesn't clarify the issue.
Do you, do you want to get the comments ahead of time?
It, it's fine, but I, I don't require it. I'm happy to respond.
A lot of what's in here would not affect the budget necessarily. You know, we, we know, we know the COLA and we know the ranges and we have an option that's been presented. And that's really what, what's there that would affect the budget currently.
The only thing is, is the department unit comments that are not interested.
Right.
And I'm, I'm happy to sit down. I, I don't know how much change once the top three are in, that will create.
I'm just thinking that if you've got those comments, we, we provided staff comments to her and those may or may not be addressed, but they're not reflected in here yet. And so maybe, maybe I could get it through and you could, you could develop a response to those comments and we could see which ones...
And it would probably be there to, to introduce with departments and talk it through.
But then if there's, if there's things that you agree with that come out of that, then those would be fed back into the...
So that sounds like a process that's taking time to get those scheduled. So I'm wondering now about the need, as Amy indicated, for the budget option. We know the three things you just said, you know, COLA is, you know, what the...
There's the COLA, there's the, the range is moving and then there's the option. And option three, I believe, is what you said.
What three?
You know, option three is the one that's being recommended.
What is three?
And so I think Amy could go ahead and update the budget to the left option three and the COLA. And I think what Becky's saying is the only other changes that would occur would be any responses to the department comments, you know, position was graded at this and it should be one higher, that might affect it. But that is a fairly minimal change, but still could be fed back into the budget.
I'm, I'm just wondering if they have this for department years. Do we know those things? Do we need to be on that?
So we, we can, we can maybe try to schedule a meeting with Becky next week and get through a lot of comments, the real influence should be incorporated. And then even there from there, you know, the budgetary changes, maybe we can have a little difference.
I think that would be reasonable. I mean, we're, you know, at this point regarding the budget, we need to agree with the essential things, you know, the compromise and the budgeting. Maybe you can have that notification before, if I mean, the budget.
We just need to be a member of the committee, deciding whether to change or get this to along with the budget so that we know.
And then I think we can schedule a talk, it's another one for...
And then they're paying off the substantial bit of...
We've got budget, so we had to do job description with that.
True.
True.
So if the, if the board is okay with that, that aspect of that's gonna happen. And then I think we've had time to process that review this. We're all gonna have questions and I think that would be more beneficial. And we've been through this, seen those results and we then have a, we can answer a question. Like if we, if, if something is a little long, if we adopt it, but we can do it with them. Something is long. Any other questions?
I have questions with the way through this process of way. I'm, I'm happy to, you've got my phone number on this file on the cover sheet. I'm happy to respond. I'm happy to come back. So everybody can hear the answers to the questions.
Well, I suggest if there's a question you need to, or if you have a phone call, it's a call. I would suggest that if it's a question that you can write or maybe write an email, just copy it forward so that we see the response that may help us asking the same question.
I will again say that often, please make more sense of questions. I'll give you an email. So if you send me an email, I might call you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. This is something that's really important to the town and to this board. I think you sense that. Appreciate all the work you've put in, all the work staff has put into this. Appreciate the board for being proactive here and wanting to, uh, do what's right for employees. Board, that brings us to our closed session, please. And I don't have the, I don't have the references for...
I think you have the text sheet on there.
So we will let John set forth this question for us.
This is where the board needs to enter closed session as allowed on a joint statute of section 143, that's 13, chapter 3, or to infer the county learning matters within term of light privilege, uh, protect that privilege, including discussing the town's continuation actions. Also, as allowed on 143, that's 13, dot 11, the 85, or to discuss...
You want to do that? You're saying?
Terms of potential property acquisition. 105 West Sea Chase.
It's your expenses. I don't want, I mean, I've had to come, but it's, it's in technology.
Well, I mean, it's really up to you. What, what you think would look better.
I think it's every person. All those favor signify by saying aye. opposed?